All of the order, looks like they must be payday. And maybe we ought to take up a collection or something. Get it all right, see how willing everybody wants to sit here. But we thank you very much. And I have a motion to be proud of the agenda.
You want to do it right way?
Mm hmm. You will do it, whatever way you want to do it. How you want to do that?
That's what means with it.
Way it is.
Oh, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the citizens we got in the county. We thank you for the county itself, too. And we thank you for the weather we're having. And bless all the people that shouldn't come and hoping any of them is sick as well. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pray that he is good as black and as he naturally deserves. And to his brother, which can find his heart invisible, never be in doubt of it.
Here, I offer a motion that the agenda be approved. We have any additions or additions?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
If I could ask the commission to move the sheriff's presentation in section four up to right prior to section one. And also the home county board of county commissioners move that from section one to prior to section one, right after the sheriff's presentation.
Offer a motion to approve the agenda with the changes suggested by city manager Dean, county manager Dean.
Dr. Fire, Secretary of State. All approve, raise your right hand, all pose the same sign. Move along, all right? Ladies getting that picture ready?
I believe what Mr. Jeter, sheriff, sheriff's going to go first.
Yeah, let him get back to work. We'll need him to be on the job about eighteen hours today, Sheriff. We glad to have you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Well, thank you guys for having us. So we're getting close to to breaking ground on our new sheriff's complex. And we wanted to come to you today and give you guys an update. So first and foremost, we thank God for the opportunity to stand here before you and even talk about this. A lot of things fell in place to make it happen, and that was above my doings. So I I give credit to God Almighty. And there's a lot of people that helped us get here, the board, our county administrator, Mr. Melvin and his his company. The deputy county administrators helped us a lot. So the funding for this facility is coming through two phases or two different areas. One being a grant that was written by the county and the other being an appropriation through the state, our legislators. So totaling just under twenty million. And this complex is at no additional out of pocket cost to our county directly. And we're excited about it. It's going to be something that's going to serve the citizens of this county for many, many years, probably after I'm no longer here. So we're excited about it. And with that being said, I have some people with me today. Mr. Bill or Will Rutherford from CRA, they were the architectural firm that designed and and drew the plans for the building. And Mr. Will's going to go over the specifics. And we have also, come on up. We've also chosen a general contractor, Culpeper Construction. Mr. Chuck Roberts is here with us today and and a couple of his guys as well. We're not going to take up a lot of the board's time, but we thought we're at a point we'd let the public and let the board. You all right? Let you guys know what it looks like and and where we at. So that being said.
Very good. Good morning, thank you all very much for having. Want to just brief you and kind of take you through process. So I'm going to show you a few just snapshots of drawings. Currently, we are one hundred percent construction documents completed. We are putting it through with Culpeper. We'll start trade bidding everything going forward from this point. If you're looking at as a screen there, it's just a just a rough overall site plan. And you'll see there's roughly twenty one thousand square feet of sheriff's office on the north top. Right below it, there's about a sixty two hundred square feet worth of maintenance. Fuel depot, that type of thing. And there's a K nine unit, it's about twelve hundred square feet on the bottom. So a K nine maintenance and sheriff's office, which all have kind of been incorporated for all the all the bureaus, all the districts, all the all the precincts within that organization. You see the hatched out area that's leaving that that skate, that landscape, trees. So we're going to leave it buffered so that it's kind of nested in that site and where it's at. Can you, who's got, can you go to the next slide?
Is that? Just speak out next slide and he'll be able to hear you.
Got you. So for a plan of the sheriff's office, twenty one thousand square feet roughly. You'll see one side is it's the unique thing about this building is the entirety of the envelope is a one hundred and sixty mile an hour wind speed. So getting us to that category of of protection in the entire of the building. The bottom right corner you see is a dispatch area that goes to, that's a little different. That that one steps up a little bit further with redundancies, N plus one of power, water, sewer, all those types of things and dispatch. The left side is not, the entire building is on emergency generator so that everything's covered. But that NFPA twelve twenty one dictates and controls that dispatch pretty, pretty heavily. So that bottom right corner and that whole side of that building really is is in that regard. So for storm events and those things are protected. It's a big deal. Next slide. And then going down, right below that is a maintenance, so the maintenance facilities. Maintenance with evidence and evidentiary collection is a really big deal. One of the probably one of the toughest things the sheriff has today is maintaining that chain of custody on that. So within the top part and the bottom, that whole bottom left is a fitness and maintenance. It would be nice if the sheriff could get rid of his his evidence, evidence in a year or two or three, but that doesn't happen. Some of it's twenty twenty years old, can't go away. Today's world, there's all kinds of stuff in there. It could be anything. So having that stuff safely secured for staff or for evidentiary collection is a big, big deal. So all that's kind of been taken into to account and everything in there. Then the bottom left piece there is K nine. So replacing that K nine in those facilities on the same parcel, like a co-location for all these divisions, a really big deal. Next slide. So I want to show you. Next slide. Next file?
That seems to be it. Will, before you leave, is the K nine facility heated and cooled or just ventilated?
Ventilated in the K nine's front part, heated and cooled, yeah. So there should be renderings behind this slide?
As you allow.
Yep. Yeah. So front elevation of sheriff's office, next slide. Just going to move through these pretty quick. And looking at the back when we get to the maintenance and affordability efficiencies of IMP panels, missionary infill. That's what you're seeing here. So so trying to get some longevity of materials, not having maintenance, not having a lot of painting, just low maintenance. Back of K nine, side, next. Other side, looking from the east, looking into the to the corner of the back of the building, next slide. Same thing, next slide. Bull up of the front, next slide. One thing I want to point out, something that's really unique here, and we'll move to the final slide in a minute. So one of the things we're trying to do in the front is a memorial. Lot of officers end of watch. And one of the things that we're doing in the sheriff's office is trying to create something that for all the community and citizens of Jackson County and those officers. And what you're looking at there, it's some set Ted stuff with, you know, natural barriers so that you can't drive into the front. And then that concrete precast in that front, that's a a seating area with a memorial wall, has bronze plaques of end of watch for officers that lost their life in the line of duty. Really good thing, positive of memorializing those things. I hope there's never more than that you have now on there. But that's one of those things that where you live in a world that's going to happen probably at some point. So trying to take care of that and do something more that kind of, you know, purposes that. Last slide? Next slide. So front entrance coming in when you approach. So again, entire site, not completely cut, you know, and and clear, just that area for what we we're needing for the the front entrance and the front. It's kind of like a pocket, you know, when you pass by and you come by the road, you're going to see through there, but you won't be able to see through every angle through that road. There is a lot of security, there's a lot of safety and security aspects that need to be maintained because it is, it is an operational, there is CID, there's everything the sheriff does there. So a lot of that stuff just doesn't need to be wide open, you know, as far as that is. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple, if that's okay.
You recognize?
I I don't see a visible roof, so I'm assuming that it's some type of low slope roofing. Is the structural system still bar joists?
Steel bar joist slope.
Steel deck, concrete roof deck, or is it low slope roofing PVC?
Yes, so you've got a PVC low slope roof, metal deck enhanced for our rating, no concrete deck, get the weight off of it and bar joists to the back. No internal gratters.
Got another?
As far as the air conditioning system, Will, can you explain a little bit about HVAC system? Is it just a series of split system eight pumps?
It it is, all on rooftop. For efficiencies, actually for affordability as well. So we're serving everything from up top so we get away from having large amounts of ground storage. A big thing was meeting budget was keeping that square footage down. So having that access on that rooftop for those units, and we've picked that parapet up enough to hide those units. You can barely see one of them right over the front. At certain, at a certain angle from the road, you'll see six inches of one of those outdoor, those air units on top.
A pair of a wall provides the protection.
It does, Lord, is debris. Yes.
I have a question there. Go go ahead, Dr. Fire, no, you go ahead.
Just a question to the sheriff, are there any plans immediately to increase the size of the K nine unit?
Nope. One more question, gentlemen. Just goes back to the timing, Culpeper, we've worked with Culpeper a number of times, a very good construction management firm. I'm sure that they'll do a good job. They're in the process of developing their GMP. Trade package bidding is underway. So with all that being said, when do you anticipate receiving a GMP from Culpeper?
I'm going to say forty five days.
Forty five days?
Forty five to fifty days, we should be putting that. So forty five, fifty days, I think we would be bringing a GMP back for for that term.
Right now, and again, I'll defer this to Chuck and his group. But right now, we're seeing a lot of interest from subcontractors. This is a very attractive project, so I'm certain that they'll be very successful in getting a lot of subcontractor interest in all of the trade package bidding. So that certainly bodes well for getting good competitive prices.
Yes.
You proud of your work?
I am.
Good, we'll get a good job then.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I would request one thing. As we move along and build, if we have a mandatory bid comp, I would ask you to adhere to that. In times past, I've seen it where it wasn't fulfilled. And as a contractor, that's not any way to look at something.
Hundred percent agree.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, so to a little bit about that, Ms. Westbrook, I think what will happen is as Culpeper is a process from here forward, he'll write his bid packages. He will advertise locally, a big part of their presence was, and local participation, maximize that. They will even write bid packages to get those values to include smaller subcontract trades. That's what they do, they're good at that. They live in this community, they work in this community, and this is not a one and done for them. They they're going to be here when it's going in forty years, and to do that, they have to, they have to, they have to, you know, stand accountable. And they have done that and will continue to be so.
Well, I've been on occasion when it hasn't happened.
Yes.
And so naturally, I'm I'm a contractor too for forty eight and a half years. So, yes, I I want to be sure that anybody that bids has an opportunity to work.
Hundred percent.
Yes, that's all I care about. No calling, no names, no fussing at anybody, we just, you know, be be sure that we're just fair, just fair is all we care about. That's all we care about in this county.
Yes, sir, so the process when we we had, we put it out for anyone to submit. And we had a team put together, that Commissioner Branch, Mr. Dean, and our elections supervisor of elections, Mr. Carol Dunaway participated in, as well as my under sheriff, Major Birch, Dan Moore, and our E nine one one coordinator, and Ms. Gina Patrick, our CFO. So they looked at all the submissions and brought it down to two. And it was it was my decision, and I chose somebody that that I can trust. And not that I couldn't trust any of the others, but I I know this man, and I know his company and what he stands for. And I have no doubt they will put something out there that this county, because this is not Donnie Edenfield's building, this county, this belongs to the county, to the citizens of our county.
Every one of them.
Yes, right, every every single one of them. And one of my things, when I when I had conversations with with Culpeper and Mr. Chuck was like, this is the amount of money that we have. And we don't want this to turn into a a a building that costs five, ten, fifteen million dollars more. This is what we have, we want to build within our means. And he assured me that he could do that. So we're excited about that, about coming in at or under cost and having something that our county can be proud of. So with that being said, I appreciate you guys allowing me to come and and stand before you this morning and just give you guys a little update. When we get ready for a groundbreaking, we will reach out to you guys and invite you as well.
One up sheriff, one other question. Typically in a construction management process, when they open the trade bid, trade package bids, I'm assuming that you and and Rhett will will be a part of that process? When when they open up all the bids from all the trade contractors? Typically, Culpeper's been giving the owners an opportunity to sit in on that process, see the the bid packages opened and hear who submitted bids. And I would assume that you can be a part of that process.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Anybody else? We we appreciate every one of you coming, we thank you. We have, I've been knowing Mr. Roberts for a long time since he was in high school. And I was just a few years older than him at that time. I I've gotten way away from since then, but anyway, we're glad to have you, Mr. Robert, we're glad to have your team. We got to have the architect that we have, and Ms. Donofro will probably oversee that part. But anybody got any other question? Anybody in the crowd want to ask him a question? We think we move forward, because we might be here about all day. But thank y'all, we appreciate you, we glad to have the facility that's coming forward.
Yes, sir.
Holmes County Board of County Commissioners, Mr. Corbin?
Yes, we glad to have Mr. Corbin, I've been knowing Mr. Corbin for about fifty, sixty years too. And he's a number one person, I've been a friend with him a long time, and he's always treated people fairly.
Mr. Chairman, Board of County Commissioners, Mr. Dean, County Administrator, Clerk of Court, Clayton Rooks. Honored and privileged to stand in front of y'all today. Holmes County was dealt a major storm, May the tenth. I heard the sheriff talk about God while ago, God truly had his hand on Holmes County that day. It happened around eleven thirty. We had fifty one roads closed, eighty one residents damaged. We didn't know what we was going to do. First call I got Monday morning, a little bit after daylight, which is Public Works Department. First county to call, Jackson County, Mr. Perry, with a hauler with men and equipment. We had a executed executive order by Sunday afternoon. Lots of National Guard troops and Sheriff's Department, he couldn't be here today. He was on come, but he had something to come up. But I wanted to come and present y'all with a plaque, my administrative assistant, Jane Delaware, is going to read a little something to y'all.
On behalf of the Holmes County Board of County Commissioners and the citizens of Holmes County, we want to sincerely thank our friends in Jackson County for the incredible support you showed during the May tenth, twenty twenty five tornadoes. When our communities were hit hard with fifty road closures and eighty one residences damaged, you didn't wait to be asked, you reached out right away, offering help, resources, and encouragement that truly lifted our spirits. Your kindness and willingness to step in made a world of difference when we needed it most. We are so grateful for the friendship and cooperation you've continued to show since that time. It's comforting to know that we have neighbors like you who are always ready to lend a hand. The way Jackson County showed up for us is something we'll never forget, and it's a reminder that in tough times, we are all part of one big community. Thank you for standing by us and and proving that together we can get through anything.
I'd like to read this plaque, I'd say like Jackson County and seniors offered support, young reverend hope, the Holmes County there and the coordinator is after make home fix. And this is here, we got a little token, we got a Holmes County cap that we wanted to present, and he's going to be there.
If you call pictures, I'm going to let. Hold it up, hold up the plaque.
Thank you all so much.
I would like to say to David that I know that Jackson County was ever in any kind of need for assistance. I know that Holmes County would be one of those counties like Jackson that would step up and come to the table and, you know, support Jackson County in any way they they could. I've known Mr. Corbin for a long time as well, and he and his team over there in Holmes County do a wonderful job. And we we know that they would come to our assistance as well if ever needed. So we appreciate that, appreciate the recognition as well.
Anybody got a thing there? Anybody in the crowd want to say something? We're moving on.
Okay, Mr. Westbrook, we're going to jump to the first section, recognition employee of the month for September and October.
Morning, I was wondering if Dexter Sims with the correctional facility being recognized for September Employee of the Month. So whereas Jackson County established an Employee of the Month program to recognize the employee to represent the various departments. And whereas Ladexter Sims began his employment with Jackson with the county on November third of twenty sixteen, he currently serves as Correctional Officer One for the Jackson County Correctional Facility and has been selected as Employee of the Month for September twenty twenty five for the standards that he has displayed in performance in his job duties. And whereas Ladexter Sims is hardworking, dedicated, and knowledgeable employee every day, he goes above and beyond his job duties, he strives for excellence every day. And whereas Ladexter is dedicated to the mission for of being for Jackson County, Officer Sims has exceptional work ethic and a positive attitude. He's extremely dependable, reliable, and punctual. You can count on him coming to work and being on time as expected. If he sees something that needs to be done, you don't have to instruct him to do it, he takes initiative and gets it done. Officer Sims is a great leader for other staff. He leads by example and shows fellow staff how the task should be conducted according to policy procedure. And whereas you never hear him complain or question anything asked of him, Officer Sims stays busy. When his assignments are complete, he helps other staff in other areas of the facility. Officer Sims is very professional in dealing with inmates, other staff, and the public. Ladexter makes Jackson County a better place for to live and work. He embodies the commissions of for Jackson for a future for you. Therefore, it be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida commends and congratulates Ladexter Sims on his selection of the month for September twenty twenty five.
And for the month of October, the extension service?
I'm Abby Smith, I'm the Horticulture Extension Agent for the Extension Services, and I have the pleasure of supervising and working with Ms. Liz Jackson. And we are recognizing her today for October. So whereas Jackson County has established an Employee of the Month program to recognize one employee to represent the various departments. And whereas Liz Jackson began her employment with the county on May fourteenth, twenty eighteen, she currently serves as Administrative Support Two for Extension Services and has been selected as Employee of the Month for October twenty twenty five for the standards that she has displayed in the performance of her job duties. And whereas Liz is a hardworking, dedicated, and knowledgeable employee, every day she goes above and beyond her job duties. She strives for excellence every day. And whereas Liz is dedicated to the mission of being for Jackson County, Liz has built a reputation as a go to person for information. She provides support for the Horticulture and Row Crop Extension Programs for the Extension Service and also serves in the reception area of the office. She makes assistance more accessible by helping citizens that call or visit the office to connect with the right resource to get the necessary information to solve their problems. Liz makes connections for people to make Jackson County a better place to live and work. And whereas pesticide safety training and restricted use license renewal and testing are one of the core areas that Liz is charged with. She takes this role very seriously. Recently, the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services made the decision to shift to digital management of continuing education units and testing online instead of in person. Liz has gone above and beyond expectations to help our farmers to set up their accounts in the new online system before the October first deadline for digital only access. Our farmers and commercial operators really appreciate the extra time and attention she provides to ensure they meet the state requirements. She embodies the county's mission of for Jackson County, for future for you. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida commends and congratulates Liz Jackson on her selection as Employee of the Month for October twenty twenty five.
Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve Dexter Sims as Employee of the Month for September. And I'll I'll recognize Ms. Jackson as Employee of the Month for October and authorize checking the amount of two hundred dollars to Mr. Sims and fifty dollars to Ms. Jackson and authorize you as the chairman to sign both of those.
I got a motion, another second, got a motion in a second to approve all the favor raised right there. All opposed, same sign, move along. Thanks, thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Okay, next item is the recognition of longevity for Jackson County staff, Sarah, were you going to do that?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for coming.
Want to recognize Mr. Bill McCrone for five years of service. The name William is an old German for strong-willed warrior. However, we know him, we know him as Bill. Outside of work, Bill enjoys singing karaoke. Working with his hands, he also, he also finds pleasure in relaxing activities such as watching TV and grit and cooking on the grill. Most of all, he loves spending time with his wife Sue and his son Forrest. Bill came to work with the county after extensive career in hardware supply industry and also the oil industry. Bill has taken responsibility on many different assignments since he was hired on as a maintenance technician, and he always come prepared to complete any task. His character qualities that were selected were enthusiasm versus apathy, expressing joy in each task as I give my best effort. Bill demonstrates the character quality of enthusiasm through his energetic and positive attitude in everything he does, whether he's tackling a challenging project at work or helping a friend with a task. Bill approaches each situation with a genuine excitement and eagerness. His enthusiasm is contagious, often motivating those around him to stay engaged and optimistic. He doesn't, he doesn't just go through the motions. He brings passion and a sense of purpose to his actions, showing that he truly cares about the outcome. Bill's consistent enthusiasm makes him a reliable and inspiring presence in any group of setting. Bill's character. Bill's character quality of enthusiasm is beneficial to our workplace because he often motivates others to put forth the best effort. Bill's eagerness provides us with a positive and motivating environment here at the county. Thank you for five years of loyalty to the Facility Department.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate.
The, we have a couple more employee recognition.
Okay.
Morning, Commissioners.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Danny Joe Morehead first. He's celebrating five years of service to Jackson County. The name Danny Joe comes from the Hebrew origin, meaning God is my judge. Danny Joe worked ten years at our local correctional facility before returning to EMT School and the Fire Academy. After becoming certified, Danny had a short stint with Gadsden County before coming back home to Jackson County. He enjoys his college football and fishing and has volunteered his time with Malone Volunteer Fire Department for more than twelve, excuse me, twelve years. Danny Joe came back to us as an EMT firefighter and quickly enrolled in the paramedic program at Shippola College. Danny was promoted to paramedic firefighter. He enjoys engaging in training students as well as new employees. As a lifelong resident of Jackson County, he is familiar with all corners of our county. The character quality I chose for Danny Joe is hospitality versus loneliness. This means cheerfully sharing food, shelter, and fellowship with those around me. And anyone who interacts with Danny Joe knows he always has a smile on his face and a joke to tell. Danny Joe has volunteered for more than twelve years at Malone, caused a career change, and he found the job that he loves and always has a smile on his face. His hospitality and cheerfulness for this career has brought in two of his nephews to work in the same department. Danny is a positive uplifting inspiration to those around him. Danny Joe's hospitality is displayed to everyone he meets and greets while working in for the county. He actively helps recruit new members to the department, and even when the days get long and tough, Danny Joe always reminds me that we had the greatest job on earth. Congratulations, Danny, for five years of service at the county.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, I'd like to call Ms. Erin Schaus. Today, we're celebrating Erin's five years of service to Jackson County. The name Erin has a meaning of mountain, of strength, and is associated with leadership, wisdom, and strength. Erin is married to Brian, and they have one son, Caleb. In her free time, she enjoys fishing, hunting, spending time with her family, and taking care of her horses. Erin began her career with Jackson County Fire Rescue as an EMT firefighter. After gaining some experience, she tackled the paramedic program and was promoted to paramedic firefighter, where she has excelled in her role. She has placed a special emphasis on fire safety in the home of seniors and disabled adults. She's been working on a program to deliver in our community that includes home visits, tips, and giveaways. The character quality that I chose for Erin is creativity versus underachievement, approaching a need, a task, or an idea from a new perspective. After being promoted to paramedic firefighter, Erin saw there was a need to promote fire safety in the home of seniors and disabled adults. After conducting research, she pulled together materials to create the program and to speak to seniors about fire safety in their homes. Also, she is researching innovative ways to help seniors escape fires and also giving away smoke detectors. Erin's creativity has been displayed by recognizing a need in our community and taking steps to addressing it. Her creativity reminds me that sometimes it takes someone looking at a problem from a different perspective to solve it. So thank you, Erin, for five years of service to our county.
Thank you, Jay.
Yes, sir. Thank you, little pair. The, Ms. Sarah, is that it?
Yeah.
Ms. Kim.
This morning, I have the privilege of thanking Alan Biggs for twenty years of service to Jackson County. The name Alan is a Celtic origin, meaning cheerful. His wife Wanda would say that sometimes he's a bit too cheerful, as he can be somewhat of a prankster. Alan has four adult children and twelve grandchildren, four boys and eight girls, each with a special nickname. Alan is dedicated to the church, his church, and passionate about Jesus. Alan has worked in the Building Division for all twenty years of his county employment. He's currently serving as the Building Official in Community Development and is in charge of implementing the requirements of the Florida Building Code and completing all plans reviewed for structures submitted for permitting. The character quality that I chose for Alan is boldness versus fearfulness, which means he is willing to identify problems and speaks the truth boldly. In his position as the Building Official for Jackson County, Alan must uphold the requirements of construction regulations, even in the face of compassion for property owners and those in less than ideal situations. His job requires him to have confidence that what he has to say is true, true, right, and just. Recently, Alan had to utilize his knowledge of building code and his desire to be fair and consistent to guide an anxious property owner through the process of ensuring a structure on a homestead was built to code in order to sell it at a fair price. Although the property owner was not happy with the process, the outcome was satisfactory, and everyone was grateful for the safety precautions. Alan's demonstration of the quality of boldness is imperative in his position guiding the Building Division to ensure consistent and fair applications of the Florida Building Code regulations. Alan, thank you for twenty years of service to Jackson County. And Alan has family here with us today.
Thank you, Mr. Bill.
All right, we're gonna get a group photo of all the Long JF employees and their directors. Y'all can talk.
Amen. I can see.
Right here. One, two, go to the left. Last one. One, two, three.
One, two, three.
That was not leashing. You got you. Thank you.
We thank each and everyone who's re-employed. Look forward to seeing you a lot more.
Right, which. We're ready to move on to the next.
Yes, sir. Let's move on.
Right.
Long way to go.
Under section one, item number five is a request for board approval by resolution amendment to progress is wrong on one. Board approval certification and adoption by resolution technical revisions to the county's local housing assistance plan. And if it's okay with the commission, I'd like to read the resolution by title only and ask the board to take action.
That'd be just fine.
A resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, Jackson County, Florida, adopting fiscal year twenty-four, twenty through twenty-seven, state housing initiative partnership ship, local housing assistance plan, and exhibits attached as Exhibit A, authorizing board chairperson to submit the plan to Florida Housing Finance Corporation, providing for an adoption, present presentations, providing for an effective date. And ask the board to take that.
Just a couple of quick questions.
You got them. You're right. You recognize.
The couple of substantive changes, one was to increase the maximum award for purchase. How much was that increase?
It was, Mr. Donough, the, I'm gonna read it in order, very low, low and moderate. It currently, prior to adopting this resolution, is twenty-five thousand for very low, twenty thousand for low, fifteen thousand for moderate. The change will go to thirty thousand for very low, twenty-five thousand for low, and twenty thousand for moderate as it relates to down payment assistance. And it also removes the cap on the the maximum amount of assistance under the emergency assistance.
This also allows someone that is taking advantage of the program previously to apply again. Read that correctly.
Emergency repairs.
I'll hear the recommendation. Any other question?
I make a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve. Second by Mr. Dr. Fire. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same side. Move along.
Mr. Westbrook, next item is board discussion approval of a small-scale amendment for Low Stress Country Market LLC. This is a change in land use from ag to mixed-use urban transitional is the request.
Do we, do we need to go to a special?
Yep. Ask the board to go into a public a public hearing and to receive comments and then close and take action on the proposed amendment.
I would join us. Any private comment? Being none. We'll be right back.
I'll offer a motion here, hearing no public comment. I'll offer a motion to approve the small-scale amendment and adopt the proposed ordinance.
Got a motion by Mr. Donovan Rose. Second bump. Mr. Crutfield, all in favor, raise your right hand. All in, no, same side. Move along. You want to get us back on the meeting now?
Okay, the next item, section three, community development. This is for review of twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five Portable Housing Advisory Committee, the final report that would be submitted to the state. And this is a requirement by the state of Florida asking the board to approve the annual report.
Let me take us back into our regular meeting. You already heard the recommendation. What's the board's plea?
I make a motion to approve it.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Got a second by Dr. Fire, by Mr. Crutfield. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same side. Move along.
Next item, Mr. Westbrook, is request board approval to set a public hearing for a, for the Pilot Travel Center addition out of Interstate I-ten and Highway seventy-one. We're asking the board to set the public hearing for October the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, which would be the next board meeting.
Chairman, I'll offer a motion to set a public hearing for the described issue for October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock P.M.
Got a motion. I got a second by Mr. Branch. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same side. Moving on.
Mr. Westbrook, moving into section four. Of course, we've already had the presentation by Sheriff Edenfield. The next item would be the consent agenda, consent agenda to pay our bills.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same side. Move along.
Mr. Westbrook, the next item will be presented by Aldi Howell. Mr. Eric Worrell is here to present. I'm asking the board to consider both agenda items, three and four. The first one is a change order being proposed for the Wayside Park Lift Station, and also the next one would be the purchase of bypass pump for the Sunny's Lift Station, which is not where it would be a sole source purchase. Mr. Worrell.
You recognize.
Eric Worrell, Aldi Howell Engineering. Good to see y'all this morning. And so the first one's the change order two. What it was was kind of an emergency situation where just recently and over the past four or five years since I've been helping out with the Wayside area, there was a break in the force main. The force mains got some issues with it, so what we've requested is to use the contingent funds that we know are gonna be left over in Phase Two B Indian Springs and use that money to replace about a thousand feet of force main right there adjacent to Wayside Lift Station. And so we actually just this morning got approval from D E P. It was, I think, on the agenda to be approved contingent on the approval, but they did give us a written approval to use that contingent funds to replace that force main.
Commissioners, if you recall, over the past several years, that section of force main from the Wayside Park Lift Station to Highway ninety, where it goes under Highway ninety, we've had multiple breaks over the past several years. This will allow us to replace that force main from the lift station all the way up to Highway ninety, the Highway ninety where it goes under Highway ninety. And like Mr. Worrell said, now we don't have to make it contingent upon F D E P approval. We have received written approval from D E P to move money within the project to cover this cost. So we're asking board approval of, well, this next item would be the sole source of the bypass pump.
Yeah, and the sole source isn't really actually the exact term for it, but what we've done is anytime Rhett informs me of some issues that they have with lift stations through the Springs Grant, I've requested advanced funding, just a miscellaneous allocated amount of money to be able to buy standby bypass pumps for lift stations that they're having maintenance issues for. Currently, this one's for Sunny's Lift Station. We're in the design phase of it, but instead of waiting a year to get full design and then bid the project out, they advance fund a certain amount of money for us to actually get some pump selections and evaluate the pump curves. And then, you know, as an engineer, I decide which one's the best pump for that system, depending on the system curve. And so we've already gone and done pump downs at lift station. I've gotten two qualified pump suppliers to give me their their pump curves and everything, and it's the Godwin pump that's the one that we're proposing to use the money for because it's a, it's a better application. And it's the, the Godwin pump, that's the one that, uh, we're proposing to use the money for because it's a, it's a better application, um, for the situation.
What's happening now is we're taking the bypass pump from the wayside park lift station and pulling it over to the Sunny's lift station whenever we have a problem. This would allow us to purchase a bypass pump specifically for the Sunny's lift station. We would not have to move the bypass pump that we've been using at wayside, which will be taken off the trailer and permanently mounted in the near future.
That's correct, and actually Wayside's waiting for that pump to get back until we can kinda get this one and or another pump to be able to put in its place right now because Sunny's has been having some issues. Um, so.
Well, that's gonna be my question, is how these two issues will relate, and go ahead.
Dr. Fire, yeah, what, what qualifies as a sole source purchase?
Uh, I mean, I guess sole source would be if I just went and picked one pump and said for him to do it, but, uh, without having to bid it out. But since this is kind of like an emergency situation, uh, instead of going out for competitive bids, which, I mean, technically I did by requesting for, you know, their recommended pumps and I looked at the pumps. And the Pioneer pump, which is the other one that we looked at, that's a qualified, uh, supplier for our lift stations. Um, it would actually have to run under the minimum operating RPMs of the pump, which card causes like carbon buildup on the diesel engines, which is not good. It needs to be under a higher load, so it wasn't a good pump for this application.
Other vendors that provide.
There's very few bypass pump vendors out there, and these are the two that are in the area that have, um, maintenance crews. If within a short distance to be able to get out and work, work on these pumps.
So technically speaking, does it really qualify as a sole source?
No, that's what I was saying, it's not, it's kind of an inaccurate term for this one, so it's not really a sole source because we have evaluated two different vendors and we've just chosen the best one for this application.
Were the vendors provided by the contractor?
Um, I actually reached out to the two vendors that are considered our qualified bypass pumps suppliers for all of our springs grant projects.
Presently, we are moving the pump from one lift station to this lift station, and this would, uh, allow us to, if we had both lift stations or both pumps down at one time, we would not be able to, uh, move the affluent coming from I ten and seventy one to the trip plant. So in essence, it is a, a emergency procurement type.
It was an emergency procurement, that's supposed to source, sole source. Uh, this, Mr. Wood, the legally, about you.
Unfortunately, this was not discussed with me at all. I, I don't have any background on this, so I, I can't give you an opinion.
So the wayside pump itself that's being used for wayside was another example of where we've done the same exact thing. I've requested advanced funding from, uh, Water Management District for our springs projects. And we purchased that pump almost three years ago, knowing that we wouldn't get around to the design and construction of it within three years. So Wayside has been using a advanced funded pump that's just like this situation that we purchased three, four years ago now. And it's helped tremendously in a lot of the situations that we've had out there where pumps have gone down, power's been, you know, been knocked out during the tornado, um, what, a couple of years ago now, so I mean, um, this is another exact situation.
While maybe sole source is not the appropriate language, Mr. Spires, you know, again, if we had the, the wayside park pumps are down. And the Sunny's lift station is down, we would not have a bypass pump to pump the affluent from the Sunny's lift station, which is right there just north of the bank, People's State Bank, right there on seventy one. We would not be able to pump the affluent and we would be dumping sewage out into the creek there. So while it may not be classified as sole source, it is an emergency.
So the appropriate, sure, we know it's an emergency, but.
I think that's more accurate.
The, uh, what do we need to do to clean this up? As it stands right now, I'm not comfortable with the term sole source, Steve, as far as the legal prescription is.
It is the recommendation of the engineer, um, and, uh, you know, we're, if, again, I'm, I'm being redundant, but if we do not have the, if both of the lift stations are down, we would not have the ability to pump the sewage. So, uh, it is, uh, while sole source is on the agenda item, it is an emergency procurement.
You have anything yet, Dr. Fire?
No, I, I guess not.
Just a, a quick question, the two hundred sixty two thousand, seven hundred twenty two dollar change order. That is for replacing damaged faulty line at the wayside lift station, that's, every bit of that cost is for replacing that line.
Uh, there's actually a little bit in there, what happened was, I don't know if you remember when, uh, Mr. McCoy, the landowner of that parcel there came in and there is a big deal about possibly moving the lift station and we went through all that. Um, during that process, um, well, again, the tornado that came through knocked down some of the power and everything, so the power got revamped after we bid it. But we, what we agreed to do was put that under the ground so that there wouldn't be any more overhead electric from the road right away to there.
Change order includes some undergrounding of some electric.
Underground stuff, yes.
But now the hundred eighty thousand dollar, hundred eighty thousand, six sixty three, that doesn't have anything to do with this change order, that is for purchasing the pumps for Sunny's.
That's right, that's just the pump for Sunny's, correct. Now that includes, um, the piping for it so that it can be piped up and some extra fittings to get it all connected and some gauges on it so that we can monitor gauges and make sure, you know, it's not over pumping. Some of these pumps are capable of putting way more pressure on the lines than what we want, you know, so those are just some of the other things we have.
Even though these two items are somewhat related, they can be taken as two separate.
Two separate items, correct.
I want for a motion to approve the change order, uh, for the, uh, Indian Springs phase two B in the amount of two hundred sixty two thousand, seven hundred and twenty two dollars.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Do I have a second, have a second, Mr. Crutts? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, four one pass.
Now allow for a follow up motion to approve a hundred eighty thousand dollars, six hundred, hundred eighty thousand, six hundred sixty three dollars for the, uh, for these, uh, for the emergency purchase for bypass pumps for the Sunny's lift station.
Have a motion to approve the hundred, eight, sixty six thousand?
It was, no, it was a hundred and eighty, hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred sixty three.
Okay, I got the start for the horse there, John, thank you. Got a motion and a second to approve the amount of money, a hundred and eighty thousand, sixty six.
Six, six, three.
And six, and I left off the three, so anyway, a motion to approve, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, four one, move along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Westbrook, the next item is a request for a fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, uh, budget amendment by the sheriff's department. Uh, this budget amendment is due to a change in the amount of funding received from F D L E, uh, for the salary benefits that come from the state of Florida. It is adjusting the, the F D L E grant up by forty seven thousand, five hundred and thirty four dollars. We're asking the board to approve the amendment.
I make a motion to approve it.
I have a motion to approve, that was second by, Mr. Bryant. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, move along.
Um, Mr. Westbrook, I believe that David Melvin is here to present this next agenda item, which is associated with the resurfacing paving of Pusa Road. Well, and I think every commission has got a copy of a bigger handout.
Trying to provide you an aerials for our weak eyes, the old man. Um, good, good news, we finally reached the point that, uh, we have in place, you know, bids and, uh, funding to pave, uh, Pusa Road. Uh, we, uh, had a, uh, the county was successful in securing a job growth grant that was related to the housing development that's going out there. And, uh, and then D O T had offered some funding to the metal section and then we had a H M G P grant for the east end of the project. In the process of the town county trying to acquire easements on the, uh, project, so we bid out the project and you can see the bid results there, we had some very good bids, uh, on the project. In the process of the county trying to secure easements on the property, a number of the, uh, residents on the, uh, east end indicated they weren't interested in paving, pave road and didn't, didn't want, uh, to give an easement for such. And so, uh, uh, working, uh, with the county, uh, going through the process, what we're proposing today is to pave the, uh, western portion of the road. Uh, I think it's ninety three hundred feet, and if you look at the aerials, uh, just kinda take you through those, uh, real quick. Uh, the first aerial that starts, uh, at the west end and, uh, as a part of that, that's the circle K development that's going there. Uh, the city obtained grant funding, uh, for the, uh, construction of what is now called Charlie's Way, that, that roof just got paved recently and circle K will begin development on that. And, uh, as you know, uh, the county, uh, did an easement swap with the reefs, she pulled a nursery out there so that, uh, Pusa Road comes in as, uh, indicated there into it. Uh, part of this is a traffic signal needs to go at the intersection there and, uh, the, and the traffic signal was based on a traffic study. That took into account the subdivision that's part of the Pusa Road project and the circle K, that's what created the need for traffic signal there. And so in this is the, uh, assisting the city with the, uh, purchase of that, uh, traffic signal at the intersection. Um, I think the city has about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in grant funds to go through it and, uh, we would use two hundred and thirty two thousand of this job growth grant fund in there. Uh, because it's related to the subdivision and, and that, all of that's grant funds by the city and grant funds, uh, by the county, uh, on that. So that'd be that traffic signal, uh, in there, and then you see the road, what we, uh, did is you pick up with the old Dozier property, um, along there, so we made sure we didn't have to have easements in that area. So we shifted down to keep the road, uh, there, the road continues, uh, all the way across to, uh, you see sheet seven across there. Then just for your information, you may have seen it, I put in, uh, the subdivision flat that, uh, uh, Lennar Homes is, uh, doing. So you can see the, uh, the road, uh, there and what they're proposing, I think they're set to close with the county in a few weeks on this property to, and begin, they went through a long, uh, process. Uh, Lennar is a huge, maybe the largest home builder in the nation, definitely in Florida, so they're a very large company, uh, you know. You begin negotiations and work with Roche Coleman, which was a large company out of Arkansas, they build five thousand homes a year. Lennar bought Roche Coleman and continued with the project, did all their due diligence and they just received all their zoning approval from the city of Mariana, uh, for the development. So now they're set to close with the county and, uh, maybe beginning construction on that, you know, early part of next year. On it, but anyway, that's where the, the road continues to get paved and then the last sheet of the aerial shows where the paving will end. Uh, we were, uh, it ends basically where the Jackson County Dozier property ends and then transitions back into the, uh, dirt road. And if you, you know, drive along Pusser, that's the very bottom of the hill, uh, on there. And so it will, uh, end the paving in there and then transition back into the dirt road on the project. With that, any questions? Our, our recommendation is to award, uh, the paving, uh, to that point, uh, with the contractor, uh, in there. Uh, we'll still have quite a bit in contingency funds that we're, we're keeping in the contract so we can kinda hang on to the money that's there. So when we get to the end of this project, if something comes up on potentially being able to pave some more or do some more, we'll, hopefully we'll have some funded, funding remaining, uh, on that.
Nail a lid on it, we can hold on to it.
What's that?
We'll nail a lid on that, buddy.
Well, it's right. We, we, we got it inside the contract and it's a contingency.
Thank you for your deal.
Yes, sir. For the county, uh, we hadn't, it was a challenge, yeah.
Good.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I know you probably said it right instead of here. Where, where's the pavement? Paving project going to end?
So it's going to, if you look at the very last sheet. I gave you, uh, if, if you see on this, you see I've got the note there that says in paint pavement here?
I just, I just see it now.
Okay, and what that coincides with is where you see the, the Jackson County property, that's your Dozier property that Lanier were on. So, so we didn't have to get easements because we could put it all on the Dozier property to south, so it goes to there, then it transitions. And if you drive the road, where that is, is the very bottom of the hill, uh, if you go on Pusser, when you get to the bottom, there's a culvert down there, it's, that's the bottom.
East of Old Air Base, but before you get to one.
It, you, right, it's, uh, a, a lot east of Old Air Base, in fact, it goes past, um, um. Gee, it's, uh, brain. Uh, hill, yeah, so it goes, uh, past Pebble Hill. But like I say, the easiest way to know is when you drive it, when you get to the bottom of the hill, the lowest, roughest part. So we, that's why we really wanted to push it that far because that's the real trouble spot on the road is, uh, is that hill. So we'll take care of the west half of the hill, the east half of the hill right now still be, uh, muddy challenge, uh.
I do know that two of the, two of my constituents that were in favor of having Pusa Road paved all the way to seventy three, uh, where it currently ends now, they'll actually have the, uh.
Right.
Road paved in front of their house, that's good.
It was kind of those that live down here in the bottom that where it's rough, they were very much in favor of paving it and we tried to get it as far as we can. People that live more on the end of the road where they don't have a problem getting in and out, we're not too interested in having it paved.
Been that way a long time.
I'll offer a motion that, uh, we recommend, uh, recommending awarding parts A and B of the project to is the Extreme Land Restoration LLC out of Lynn Haven. Uh, for the total amount of the project of four million, two hundred and eleven thousand, seventy seven dollars and nine cent.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign.
Chairman, one more question.
You got one.
And this may go to David, it may go to, uh, Mr. Dean.
About, about Brett, y'all from that.
It, uh, you know, you included the, uh, I guess it's the overall master plan of housing subdivision, of course. Uh, I know that they're not, they don't plan on developing all of these lots, uh, in the first phase, do we have any idea? How this is gonna be phased, um, how many? Is there been any conversations with them?
We, we haven't had, I haven't had any conversations as far as how it would be based, Mr. Sweetsie.
It, it's gone through the city process and I asked them that question, uh, several times and, and all, and so I think, I think in a way that maybe what they're coloring is here. I think maybe the red is, is the, well.
So I can't quite read it on my copy.
Either, but I, I think there's, they're going into final design and all on this, but that's what I would suspect is kind of maybe the red area or something becomes the, or at least those, those lots, uh, on the top part would be their first phase. And then they'll roll into subsequent phases in that.
I, I, I would like to have a, uh, you know, as soon as possible, since this thing seems like it's moving forward now, is to maybe have representatives of the, uh, development company, uh, come and make a, a presentation. This is a significant development and it's gonna have, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think they'd be happy to do that.
I can reach out to Mr. Strickland and ask him.
Gene Strickland, not our Gene Strickland, is the, uh, uh, worked with Lennar that's enjoyed this, yeah.
Go ahead. Do you know, this, this is still considered workforce housing?
Yes, yeah, I, uh, I would consider it workforce housing, I think I've heard them say that they're in the two eighty, three hundred thousand dollar range.
Two fifty, three hundred, two forty, three, three hundred thousand dollar range, three fifty, some of them. It's, it's not, it's not subsidized housing.
No, it's not subsidized and it's not expensive housing, it's, it's workforce housing and, and one. Expensive housing. It's it's workforce housing. And and one reason that they they locate. This was a kind of a prime piece of property is they want to be close to interstate because they know they'll be serving residents of Jackson County. Some of them work somewhere else who is. It's convenient for those that may work in Tallahassee or something like that to be close to the interstate. That's why this site had a lot of appeal to it. You know, so you're still backing. There's a lot of vision coming to fruition now there that interchange, developing this housing. I mean. When did we start on this process of identifying that as as a long time ago, housing and and really having a great partner in Lennar, this large company like that. And we went through some processes with some others, but but I think we've got a real winner.
Thank you. Any other question? Anybody on the board want to say something?
Thank you.
The recommendation, all in favor, taking five, I raise the right hand.
We already voted.
That's what I thought. Yes, yes, making sure.
Don't want to miss it.
Move on.
Mr. Westbrook, the next item, number seven. This is a requesting board approval to enter into negotiations for CEI services for this same project. The ranking committee met and they have ranked Alday Howell as the highest ranking. Submittal and we would like for the board to approve negotiating with them to perform services.
Chairman, some of them.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise the right hand. All opposed, same sign. I should have waited a moment. All right, move along.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, the next item on the agenda is the tourist development council quarterly report. And I believe Ms. Kelsey Jackson is here to go over that if. And answer questions as they come up. Go ahead, Ms. Kelsey.
Come, come to them.
But amen, please. While Kelsey's coming to the podium, did did we miss number or did he move to deleted number five?
That was the.
Is that moved or eliminated? Was that taken care of? I just missed it.
That was the budget.
Oh, my goodness.
Good morning. All right, y'all. I felt I feel like we've had about twelve months worth of work into this last quarter. So I'll start off recapping our financial overview. We have two months left worth of collections and yet we have already hit our estimated budget of revenue for the fiscal year. So this is going to mark the biggest, largest amount of revenue that we have collected for the department. So. Really, I think during our entire existence. So we're anticipating that we're going to hit just under nine hundred thousand dollars in a low estimate. I think that we're likely going to go just above that. So that's fantastic for our bed tax collections and our interest that we've been collecting, especially in our lockbox funds. And our convention center is had its first events over this last quarter, starting off with a mystery dinner banquet style, a wedding expo. The Republican Party Reagan Day Dinner and we have several events that are coming up over the next few months as well. Just about every weekend is booked in December. Our largest event was the Republican Party Dinner at the end of September. The space was packed and I appreciate everyone that was able to attend that evening. We also made some progress on our Jackson County Museum during this last quarter. We've awarded the bid to Monolith Construction, who's getting started on that to be able to finish the shell stabilization for that space. Great Oaks interior renovations are updated or are complete at this point. We have a few areas identified for some of the next needs for the space, including lighting for the parking lot. Along with some small updates to some of the light fixtures as well, but we're anticipating starting to rent the space out here in the very near future. Our strategic plan, as you all know, was completed over this last quarter, which is going to help us identify over the next five years, our strategies and tactics and give us all some measurables that we can be able to assess our our success. I want to highlight over this last quarter, we had four new restaurants open up in Jackson County. Watermelon Alley over in Cottondale is serving ice cream, fun drinks, along with various box meals that they're able to serve for the public. Cajun Corner is our first Cajun restaurant in the county, and that's over by Merits Mill Pond RV Resort, or sorry, the Florida Caverns RV Resort. Cozy Cup Cafe was previously up the Creek Cafe. They relocated just over here on Jackson Street. And last but not least, Carpenter's Table also opened up over in the former Oaks Building. So. Two of those restaurants had signed up for our blind date for the potential business owner event earlier this year, which helped connect potential business owners with all of the folks that are involved with the process of opening up a business. In our communities. So it's fantastic to see some of the work that we put into that event and business development coming to fruition. Additionally, we had some really great marketing efforts this past quarter. Starting off at the beginning of the quarter, we received about ten different reels and about a hundred different videos and photos from a videography project that was focused over on the east side of the county. And some of the areas around Marianna as well. So that will be really great for some hunting and fishing campaigns that we'll be having going on this upcoming winter season. Additionally, we had a ninety six percent increase in our social media interactions largely because of the ads that we've been placing. So we've been very strategic and looking at what types of content our audiences engage well with. That way we can continue to spread our reach there. We also had a fantastic foodie campaign which spotlighted twelve restaurants all around the county. So we focused in Graceville, Campbellton, Malone, Marianna, offered. Compass Lake and Sneets as well. So it's really great to be able to get out and show these restaurants that we are for them and help bring some much needed spotlight to them. In addition, one of those foodie foodie bloggers is participating in the World Food Championships, which is, if you look on their website. The food equivalent of March Madness with a pinch of the Olympics in it. So having that type of spotlight and and platform for us to get more about Jackson County out will be fantastic for our our community as well. With it being the end of the year, we got several magazine ad placements that you'll see in some of our expenses and those copies will be available once the magazines are published, which will include the official Florida Vacation Guide. Undiscovered Florida, Texas Monthly, Atlanta Magazine, Texas and Atlanta will be a hunting focus campaign. And last but not least, Chicago Magazine, which will go out in February for a paddling and kayaking campaign. So with that, I know that we're running along on our agenda, but any questions that you all have about our quarterly report?
But I will say that yesterday, TDC meeting, I think we actually approved some sponsorship requests for. Events up in Malone and Graceville.
Yes.
I think that's important that we reach out to those parts of the county as well.
Absolutely. We're wanting to really make be intentional and proactive with our event funding program particularly. And making sure that we're identifying events throughout our community that reach beyond Marianna and help support our smaller community. So that way they know that we are for them as well.
I'll also say that, you know, the fact that our TDC dollars are coming into the county since they've been increasing and we're, as you pointed out, that we're looking at the most. Tourist development dollars that have come into the county ever. I think there's probably a number of factors that contribute to that, but one of them is. Obviously, the job that you're doing as the director, Kelsey, and also our focus on more effectively marketing Jackson County. So I think all of those. Things are playing a part in the fact that we're seeing more and more people visit Jackson County and spend time in Jackson County.
Thank you. We we just received our economic impact report from Visit Florida, which did show that we had a fifteen percent increase in visitor spending in Jackson County. Which is ten percent higher than our regional average. So I think that's a testament to our focus on the quality visitor and the right visitor. We could bring in loads of spring breakers into our community and have some impact, but ultimately we're focused on bringing in a quality visitor that's going to spend more time and more money while they're here. All right.
Any more question? Any more question?
I just want to mention.
Go ahead.
On Saturday, you know, they're having a Horror Festival in Graceville. So if anybody don't know, whatever, they're welcome to come.
Yes. In addition to the, we, October is packed, y'all. The Horror Festival is going on this weekend. We also have a Stock Dog Show that's going to be taking place out at the Ag Center. We've got the Pecan Festival that's coming up here soon. So our website that y'all previously approved updates to is going to go live this week and our event calendar will come back online. So I encourage everyone to go to visit Jackson County FLA dot com. Slash events to be able to stay up to date on all the events going on in our county.
They also have, I don't know if it's the largest, but one of the largest car shows, antique cars. They 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 real big in in the antique car, a lot of vehicles.
Thank you, Mr. Crutchfield.
Mr. Brad.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What do you contribute? If I'm reading this right, from twenty two, twenty three to twenty three, twenty four. A large, large increase in. What what do you contribute?
Yes, sir. So this is some statistical data that I can share with you is once vaccines became available for COVID, there was a large increase in travel that the tourism industry refers to as revenge travel. People were kept up in their houses for so long that they came out in droves and started going back to their favorite destinations. So that was your first phase of impact. Next, international travel had a major comeback over into the United States. Florida is one of the top vacation states for international travel for the United States. We saw a great increase there. Additionally, our one percent increase in our bed tax came in during that twenty three, twenty four fiscal year. So that helped that third phase of really boosting those numbers up.
It really jumped up from one ear to the nails. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Any other question?
Motion to approve.
Do we have to approve?
For informational purposes only.
Move along.
Item number nine, Mr. Westbrook, this is a request for board approval of an amended MOU with the. Help cred care insurance. This is the insurance that inmates receive to help pay for their medical costs. Based on my descriptions with Chief Jeter, there's going to change in the law or regulatory requirements. New inmates cannot be signed up for the health insurance whenever they first arrive. They can be signed up when they leave. And if they come back. Then they would be able to take advantage of the health insurance. So we're amending the agreement to accommodate that change in the regulatory requirement. So, Mr. Don't see Mr. Mr. Jeter, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir. They just have the opportunity when they are released, when they sign them up, they they have.
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully ask the board to table this item. It was emailed. Last Tuesday, but it hasn't been approved by legal. There was a change in Medicare policy, but they basically completely restructured this agreement. From from a legal standpoint, this is a totally different program than what we're currently operating. I think this needs to go back to the vendor for.
How long did it need to go back? What was that person?
It would depend on their schedule, their availability. There are some pretty substantial changes that could create liabilities for the county that I'm not personally comfortable with.
Is there any restricted timelines that we're battling against on this issue?
The Medicare change actually came in January. So to my knowledge, there's nothing to urge and type.
Yeah. Mr. Jeter, is there any reason to push this through today or?
Uh, the way it was explained to me, it was.
Doc fire.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer a motion at the table. This item pending legal review.
Second. Got a motion and second at the table, but stay right there, Mr. Jeter. Hold. Let let us get a little more clarification. Got a motion and a second to to disprove it, lay it on the table, lay it up, whatever.
Before I vote, I'd like to hear what Mr. Jeter.
I mean, absolutely.
The way it's explained to me when I spoke with the gentleman was was currently when we receive an inmate, we can sign them up for the insurance and the following, beginning of the following month, they're eligible. So it has helped us save money. When we took them to the hospital and medication and stuff. Now, you know, the change in regulations and federal regulations. Now we sign them up when they initially come in, but they're not eligible till the day they're released. And once they're released, they have insurance. And if they come back to the facility, they'll still have the insurance.
So so if they're if they're incarcerated the first time, they're not covered by this insurance while they're in our facility.
No, but we've done, been almost about a year and unfortunately we get, we see a lot of same people. So a lot of the people we're getting. Come back in or have this insurance when they when they ride back. And it. It it runs on to see if they have any kind of medic, medical insurance, like Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Medicaid, Medicare, anything like that. You know, of course, they have that. They have to use that insurance there and eligible for for those.
Anybody got any other question? They have a chain. Doc fired a motion to finish it. Mr. Crutchfield said, all in favor, laying it, holding all on this and not making a decision. Take the five, I say. All those same sign.
Okay, ready next up. Westbrook, the next item is the annual fire interlocal agreement with the volunteers. These agreements have been submitted, provided by the fire chief, fire rescue, and we're asking the board to take action. There's no change to the agreements other than the date. And the amounts remain the same. The, I believe, chief, the. Map is been modified to driving miles for the volunteers or has that been modified at all?
As per the the response, the response.
Same agreement, just a difference.
All right.
Offer a motion to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year interlevel agreements with all of the volunteer fire departments.
I have a motion. Second. But Mr. Crutchfield, approve. All in favor, raise the right hand. All opposed, same sign, same story, second bird.
Next item, Mr. Westbrook, is the interlocal agreement between the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners and the City of Marianna Fire Agreement. This has been modified to reflective of what the agreement that Gadsden County uses. The major change associated with the new agreement is the dollar amount, which goes from fifty two thousand a year to sixty thousand dollars a year. And proposing a five year agreement rather than a one year agreement. And the drive and the map does is modified to five driving miles from each station of the City of Marianna.
Do your recommendation go along with that?
Yes, sir.
Offer a motion to approve the recommended change to the agreement.
How emotional do I have a second?
Question. How how much increase is it?
It's from fifty two to sixty, Mr. Branch.
And they have increased the coverage?
The coverage has not been increased. It's just been better defined. To five driving miles from each stations. We got a correct statement, Mr. Runner.
Which which not defined in any other agreement. Excuse me. It was not defined in any other agreement.
Doc, fire, you're right.
Any rationale given for the increase?
Yes, sir. In May of twenty twenty five this year, the city of Marianna sent forth the letter to to the county administrator, myself. And the board revoked the agreement that would be upcoming. This agreement typically is addressed during budget time. That letter was passed along to Mr. Dean as he was incoming. And so we met with Chief Hall and Mr. Long with the city several times under some negotiations. The fifty two thousand dollars has has been an amount that's been there for over ten years per se. And. You know, due to inflation, of course, increased call volume, both on our side and the city of Marianna side, has led to the city wanting an increase in. Money from the county to sustain those services. So Mr. Dean had did speak with Mr. Long. One of the things that we did not have defined was the distance outside of the city which they respond. Which needed to be defined. Several reasons. It was. Defined before the second station was added, before Family Dollar. And it was either driving distance from the edge of the city of Marianna, which has since expanded. Multiple times or driving distance from the station. And we defined that area, Mr. Dean and I did. And the explanation of that area is. The majority of the this agreement is written for maintaining ISO purposes for homeowners insurance for fire protection. So. ISO defines five driving miles from a recognized fire station. And so that's the reason we put that language as five driving miles from each of the city stations. And those maps that include the distance included in driving miles.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do you see the necessity of this?
I do see.
That we have them?
Yes, sir. The agreement between the automatic, this agreement is an automatic aid agreement between the City of Marianna and ourselves. That helps us have maintain ISO rating on our side. So our ISO rating was recently decreased from a five to a four in a positive way. And the City of Marianna's have made improvement on their ISO agreements. And so it helps both departments.
Let me ask you another question then.
Yes.
What were who was the agreement made with? You said there was an agreement, a standing agreement. Who who made that agreement?
The current agreement.
The current agreement.
The one you just mentioned, the one I'm talking about.
The proposed agreement.
About three or four sentences back.
The proposed agreement? The agreement has been always between the city and the county. Every year, it's been brought forward to the commission. The commissioners approve the agreement. It goes to the city and the city commission approves it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You recognize?
Thank you. Marianna's previous agreement was identical to the other interlocals that you all just approved. This is a completely different agreement, and I did go ahead and send this to Marianna's attorney. They reviewed it. I don't know how Marianna's commission is gonna, you know, feel about the agreement, but.
Thank you.
Their counsel standpoint, they wrote that.
I would like to make a comment on the agreement. The current agreement.
Let me recognize you, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
Go right ahead.
City of Marianna.
I'm staying.
Current agreement that's being proposed to you today has not been seen by the City of Marianna. The agreement that we proposed and sent to Chief Brunner and to Mr. Dean was identical to the volunteers' agreements, but it did have three changes. Okay. That was reviewed by Matthew Way. And presented to y'all back in May.
That's correct.
Don't we share costs in that? In what would our share be?
In in what, Mr. Chris?
Like in in the money part, where are they getting? You know, if we agreed to a $60,000, do we have a match $60,000 with that or they, don't we share in the cost?
No, sir. The the $60,000 is would be the payment to the City of Marianna for the as a result of the interlocal where they would provide service outside the City of Marianna.
Yes, sir. The city commission set specific terms back before May, which is why we sent the letter. Some of their terms were to change the amount of time it took to get out of their agreement from 120 days to 60 days. Another term that they wanted in the agreement was an annual increase based on CPI. Think that's fair, based on inflation over the last 15 years. And then another change was the amount of money to catch up with the inflation over the last 15 years.
And if if I could, Mr. Westbrook.
You you're.
The, yeah, the, yes, Mr. Hall did get us a proposed interlocal agreement that was reflective of the other volunteer agreements. And like Mr. Hall said, the amount was $75,000 a year plus an increase every year based on Consumer Price Index. Based on discussions with some of the commissioners, it was not well received. And I did not support the agreement that was proposed, which would have taken it $75,000 and a CPI increase. And therefore, we modified the, we didn't modify it. We came up with an agreement that I felt that the board would potentially be comfortable with. And that is the reason that we did not present the agreement that was submitted by the City of Marianna.
My question for you, who owns the firehouse? Jackson County?
It is, the property is owned by Jackson County Board of County Commissioners as a result of the transfer of property from the state board.
Bottom bottom end for money is all I can say. I wouldn't, nothing nothing against you, Mr. Fireman. I'm glad to have you all the way, Mr. Chief. I'm sorry. But at the same time, that amount of money, or just a hand from one hand to another, when it's hard for this board to have to deal with every day. That's all I got to say.
Maybe I'm overlooking it, but is there some somewhere in here that it actually shows the depiction of, excuse me, the increases in the in the fees being requested?
And it's in the agreement.
Yeah.
The cost of.
I heard somebody mention that over the 15 years, it's been no increase yet, right?
Correct, yes.
Is there a breakdown of what the increases have been over the years of what the F O has been?
Don't we usually require firefighters to submit their expense reports?
The City of Marianna sends that over to the finance office, to the clerk's office.
Right. So every year, you all receive sort of an audit of each department's expenditures of the money that you've given them. I don't know if it actually makes it to you all, but it it makes it to my hands.
Doc fires, you were asking for the.
That's correct, Phil. You have a question. Okay. Here says the amount of funds to be expended or requested shall zero, but there is an amount that's existing and then the amount is being requested. What is that difference?
Last fiscal year, we expended $52,000. They requested $75,000, and then Mr. Dean proposed the agreement of $60,000.
And in addition, just clarification.
Yes.
Oh, oh, no. They they will, without agreement, they'll go out five miles outside city limits. That's what you're saying.
We defined it as five driving.
Before you didn't go out?
Yeah, we went out. We've never declined the county assistance. We've taken that ladder truck to Cypress, to Graceville, Cottondale, you know, anywhere. We've had an engine in Grand Ridge. Anytime the county has ever requested, we've never denied them assistance.
And I would think the same thing of the volunteer fire departments as well. I would hope that the volunteer fire departments.
Yes.
Respond likewise when when called. I mean, I would guess that they would.
Yes.
I guess my question was just for clarification. The city had, as Chief Hall had just expressed, the city had requested a $75,000 per year cost.
Plus a CPI increase.
Plus a CPI every year.
Correct.
And then also, there was one other change as well.
Right out of 60 days rather than 120 days.
And then, and our agreement, looking through it, is we're offering $60,000 per year, based on what I just heard Mr. Dean describe. No increase on an annual basis in this agreement would be in place as it would as it is proposed for five years instead of three.
Yes.
So that accurate description of what's being proposed on that.
And from here, if the board approves this, then we would send it to the commission, the city commission for Marianna. Whether they approve it or not, then we come back to the draw, come back to this board.
I would like to make a note that this has been a ongoing for the past two and a half to three years. We've had these conversations. Prior to Mr. Dean coming here, when he was still the city manager, we've been trying to get this negotiated to no resolution.
Swap side now.
Yeah.
Question.
Yeah, Brad.
Did I just understand you saying that the proposal we have now does not include the the 3% or the CPI increase?
Correct. It does not include a CPI clause.
It just ups the.
That way, Rob.
The the money to $60,000 a year.
Correct.
And every year.
For five years.
To the three years.
Correct. Well, is it annual or greeting?
That's right. That's right. It's annual. But it would it would be locked in for five years.
If the City of Marianna approves it.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
And does does the people who that five miles cover? They with the the ISO rating too, even if it's out in the county?
Those living within five driving miles of either a county station or a city station would benefit from the ISO rating of whichever is greater or the closer department there to. So, for example, they lived in the unincorporated county but live closest to one of the City of Marianna fire stations, then they would benefit from the their lower ISO rate.
So the people in kinds feel like here with.
Correct. They would benefit from Chief Hall's station out there in Conso Hollow.
Doggo Heights area, you know, there there's.
There's a couple of close neighborhoods within five driving miles.
What is the ISO rating for the county?
Four slash four X.
And so we we do rely on the Marianna's response and.
Absolutely.
What is it for Marianna?
Three, three X. One's the best you can have.
That's correct, Phil.
Oh, let me understand this. I believe if the county owns the building, I mean, I guess maybe before I get into sure of the cost. County furnishes the building and Marianna supplies the people, that's the way it goes.
Currently.
County's got something involved in it, hasn't it?
We don't have any assets or personnel stationed at that.
If we own a building.
The building came through the transfer of property from the state law.
Who who maintains the building?
The city.
City of Marianna.
City of.
Yes.
We we don't have any actual costing. The county doesn't have any actual costing.
Yeah, I thought.
Other than $60,000, other than.
Yeah, other than increases, yeah. Yeah. Everything goes good. It's hard to say bad say.
Anybody finish?
So the motion, the 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 request today is to approve $60,000 on a five-year plan with no increase yearly. And then the 60 days rather than 180 days to 120 is to get out of the contract. And that that if we approve it, that agreement still has to go back to the city commission.
Do we have a motion, but no second. Am I right, Mr. Card?
That's correct. Is that the motion for that?
My motion was to approve the $60,000 for the five years.
I'll second.
I don't want to prove anything. I'm not going to be here to see it. I'm not going to.
That's the question you hear.
No, no. Got a motion in the second. All in favor, raise your right hand. So I'm sorry, didn't include.
Make sure I'm not complaining.
I apologize. I just asked.
We tabled something because it needed legal review, right? And this very last citizen's sentence says that this agreement is pending legal review and approval, has that been heard?
Yes, this agreement was sent to Ms. Jordan, and we met on it Friday after this was submitted to the agenda. Mr. Dean, Ms. Jordan and I did meet, and she can speak on.
Yes, the agreement is the best on legal.
Okay.
We just had a Wednesday deadline.
Okay.
We typed it.
That's right. That's all I want. No.
I apologize, Doc.
No problem, no problem.
I'll make it up.
No problem, no problem.
All in favor of that proposal, raise your right hand. All opposed, the same sign. It carried. Move along.
Okay, Mr. Westbrook, number 12 on the agenda is board approval letter of agreement for the Public Emergency Medical Transportation Program. This is a the agreement that we've entered into in the past, and it does allow us the county to participate in the P E P E M T program for the state of Florida, allowing us to recapture dollars associated with transport of Medicaid patients under Medicaid managed plans. We're asking for the board to approve the agreement.
Heard the recommendation. You you.
I'm just standing here for questions. I have to make another trip.
I thought you were asleep.
It usually comes with questions, so I'm here to answer it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve by Mr. Chris Field, thinking by Mr. Don Pro. All in favor, the low, the big, the high, the thin. Go ahead, Doc.
Yes, sir.
Bruno, you know, what kind of affiliation agreement that we talked about between Gulf Coast College and Jackson County Board of Commissioners?
That'll be the next item.
Am I too far over? Okay.
Yes, yes.
Well, just I'll see before.
Yeah, I'll wait on you.
I got scolded. He's a cool teacher, y'all know.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, go right here.
That's all right. All in favor, taking five, I say, and I. Motion approved, go ahead.
Okay, item number 13, Mr. Westbrook.
Yes, sir.
Is the request approval authorization by the chairman to sign clinical affiliation agreement between Jackson County Board of County Commissioners and Gulf Coast State College. We have these types of agreements with both Tallahassee State College as well as Shippola College. We've reviewed it and asked the board to approve the agreement.
All Doc fires is doing was, you know, Gulf Coast really not in favor of Marianna and Jackson County. Doc's fire just protecting our territory.
Yes, sir. Dr. Fires, this is specifically for the E M T and paramedic programs to allow them to come do clinical hours as required by the program on our ambulances. We give first right to Shippola College because they're here in our backyard. And then we open up unfield clinical sites to Tallahassee State College, which, you know, it's quite a distance of a drive. But we've we've got one or two students every year trickle out to a rural area versus riding downtown Tallahassee. And same with Gulf Coast. They have a number of clinical sites in Panama City. They just wanted to offer a rural area for an ambulance ride for those students.
Okay.
Who provides professional liability for this venture?
The liability lies within the college with the student enrolled in the college. So that that college protects that student.
They provide us documentation that they're providing for professional liability.
Yes, sir.
I would think the benefit would be just the exposure to Jackson County into.
That and a possible recruitment effort as well.
I think my motion has been broken.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Don Pro. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, the same sign, move along. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Westbrook, the next item, number 14, is request board approval invitation to bid 25-26 is the fuel island supplier basically to supply both gasoline and diesel to the Board of Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, and it will be based on lowest price. Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve the solicitation 25-26 dash zero one, otherwise you'd have signed it.
Got a motion, got a second by Doc's parents. To approve, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, the same sign, move along.
Mr. Westbrook, the next item, number 16, this is, we're asking the board to review and to request. This is the proposal for legal services. We would like to wait until the next meeting in order to actually approve the RFQ and also to approve the ranking committee. And again, we would ask the commission to reserve approving, final approval until the next meeting and ask the commission if they would like to potentially interview the highest one ranked or the highest two ranked or three ranked law firms that submit for this. So we're asking for the commission to just acknowledge, approve. But again, we would bring this back for final approval at the next meeting.
Motion, lay it on the table. Motion on, lay it on the table.
So I'm sorry.
I mean, it's all right.
You need to.
I love to table this.
Yes.
Request.
Yes.
You say.
That's your motion?
Yeah, I make a motion with table.
I need a sec.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, lay it on the table at the next meeting. All all right, raise your right hand. All opposed, the same sign, move along.
Okay, Mr. Westbrook, the next item is board discussion approval of resolution to borrow funds from the Florida Association of Counties, the Florida Local Government Program. In 2018, the county had borrowed funds from the Florida Association of Counties, the ARM, called Florida Local Government Program. We have a, we executed a loan agreement at that time according to the Florida Local Government Program. We not, we do not, we can borrow additional funds under the current loan agreement by passage of a resolution. And we're, this is associated with the purchase of 15 motivators. The purchases would take place over a period of two years. February of 2026, we would purchase five. The following year, we would purchase 10. We currently have five motivators on lease, and that lease expires in February. This would replace those five graders with the purchase rather than continuing to lease. I put you a table. I put you a, uh, a table there in front of you where you could see what the differential cost would be based on the, our review and the information provided. It is almost exactly the same cost to purchase rather than lease the graders. And again, this is, uh, we're, we're asking the commission to sign a resolution for five million dollars. It would accomplish the purchase of five motor graders in February of twenty-six and then ten motor graders in February of twenty-seven. And we would take down those, uh, dollars as we acquired the graders.
Okay.
So I can read the resolution by title and ask the board to take action, uh, whenever you're ready for me to do that.
That'll be, that'll be fine. Move, do that.
Go ahead. Uh, um, a resolution of the Board of County Commission of Jackson County, Florida, authorizing borrow of not to exceed five million from pooled commercial paper loan program of the Florida Local Government Finance Commission pursuant to the terms of the loan agreement among the county, among the county J P Morgan Chase Bank N A and the commission in order to finance cost of the purchase of various motor graders, including the reimbursement of expenses incurred by the county in connection ther- therewith, if any, authorizing that execution of a loan note or long notes to evidence such borrowing and agreeing to secure such borrowing with, with a conveyance covenant to budget and appropriate legally available non-aborum revenue of the county, all as provided in the loan agreement, authorizing the execution and delivery of such other documents as may be necessary to effect such borrowing and providing an effective date.
What's the answer's rate?
Uh, right now it's three point six six.
It is an adjustable rate.
Ma'am.
It, it's an adjustable rate, um.
It is an adjustable.
It is an adjustable rate and the, uh, Board Association of Counties did provide, uh, historical data, uh, as far as the interest rate. Uh, it, it, it has not changed substantially and lets you go back several years, uh, whenever rates were very volatile. Uh, the, you know, as the commission knows, uh, and as it's been said, this is a variable rate. Uh, we have looked at, uh, potential fixed rate products. Uh, however, if you look at those fixed rate products, the, uh, you would have to do, there would be additional fees associated with it. But in, in twenty eighteen, the Board of County Commissioners determined that this was a, it was advantageous to use this type of ball.
And the, the interest rates, even though they're variable, will be, will be, will be drawing those dollars down in twenty twenty-six to purchase five graders and then in twenty twenty-seven will be drawn remaining dollars down to purchase ten.
Yes.
Question, go ahead.
Uh, prudent is, does that lock the end, uh, you could go either with a lease program or the buying program?
This, this authorizes us to borrow the five million dollars.
Or the.
Uh, you know, if, if we, before we borrow it, we could come back to the commission and opt to lease. But right now.
Yeah.
We've had multiple people involved in multiple conversations as it relates to this, uh, purchase versus lease.
Yeah.
And it, based on every one internally's, uh, review of what we're looking at doing, this is the most advantageous way to acquire. Plus, we would have ownership of the equipment, Mr. Crutchfield, at the end. If we decided that some of those graders were, you know, we could continue to use them, we would keep them or we could turn around and sell them, whereas under the current lease we have right now, we do not. We, we could buy them, but it would be at a substantial cost.
Typically, at the end of, of five years of use, I mean, I would think that those, Jeffrey, those graders would still have some serviceable time left on them, uh, based on hopeful uses. Is that a fair statement? Have some value remaining to them?
Yes, I think, I think most of the time after five years, I mean, we've got some equipment out there now that's twenty years old. Uh, you know, a lot of it depends on how it's taken care of by the operator and all that, you know, because that's always your biggest concern. All along, you will have a, you may have some highway say made on Monday or Friday. You know, you might have several of them with hydraulic pumps or something go bad, but we keep a track of records and, and if we're spending more than what it's worth, it's, it's time to go.
If I.
Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
My, my, right reason I was asking that, my question is if we, on this, I guess, one of them is purchasing one lease.
Yes.
Is she here? And on the, what is the brand when the one is leasing?
Uh, I was just getting ready to ask, uh, Mr. Redster to comment on that because the Roden Bridge has recommended that we go with the Komatsu, uh, motor graders.
Right.
My que, my question is on that would be, I know we've always ran Caterpillar or John Deere. I don't know how to prepare myself either one. On the Komatsu, I don't know what, have we had much experience with that?
We've got, uh, we had a Komatsu loader, we bought a Komatsu loader, uh, two or three years ago. Uh, it's down in our Compass Lake pit, it's the one that gets used every day. They come in, they service the machine for us. The machine don't even come to the shop, it's set up in there. I forget what, uh, plan it is, but we don't have to service it for the first several years. We don't, also all these graders, there'll be no, no money affiliated with having to service them. All we have to do is provide fuel for the first, I don't remember the hour, two thousand hour, three thousand hour, something like that.
So, so on the one that we bought, we, you had good, good service.
Yes, you still, it, there, there, there would be no difference in, uh, with a lease or a purchase as far as your service or anything. Uh, the biggest thing is, and I think all of us that have been involved have talked about, whenever you, at the end, like these five that we're turning in February fourth, they're gone. So we made all these payments.
Yeah.
If we could still have those five graders, it'd be just like the tractors that we just surplus. They were leased, but there was a one dollar purchase price at the end. And if, and then when you, when we done the one dollar purchase price, then we had, you know, we had tractors that we could surplus.
Yeah.
And, and reap benefits of and have some money.
Well, I figure it is right here on each one. You, you only gonna save four hundred, round, well, four hundred and forty-seven dollars ninety-eight cent on each one. But you said something about the end of the lease, you gotta pay another ninety thousand.
If you won't purchase it.
That's not, the ninety thousand not figured in here?
Yes, sir, it is on that page that I gave you, Mr. Crutchfield.
It figured in.
That residual ownership payment is associated with that ninety-five thousand dollar payment that you would have to make if you wanted to own the piece of equipment at the end of the lease.
So you're saving, you're gonna be saving four hundred and forty-seven dollars a month right now. And then.
But ownership at the end, I'm sorry.
Yes, and you'll have ownership at the end. So you're gonna save five hundred a month on five grader, twenty-five hundred a month. And, but at the end, you're going on instead of having to spend another, what, four hundred fifty thousand if you wanted to buy it?
Four hundred, just say if five hundred thousand times twelve would be sixty thousand, six thousand?
That'd be.
What was, what was that, Mr. Clark?
Oh.
Five hundred times twelve, that'd be.
Off the top of your head, round off, five hundred times twelve.
Six thousand.
Six thousand, then times five, thirty thousand.
That'd be thirty thousand you saving and then.
But, but, but the ninety thousand that figured in, figured in here and the difference is gonna be, say, the five hundred dollar, a little under that though.
I, I don't, I don't think I'm tracking with you just right because we could say.
The buyback, we gotta pay at the end of the thing, we gotta pay more money to.
If we want, if we leave them and we want to own them at the end, we'd have to pay the additional ninety thousand.
Okay.
By purchasing them, they will be ours.
So that really not figured in the buying them.
No.
Back. So what's gonna happen is if you, if, and that's just what I'm getting at. If you give, if you go with them and gotta pay ninety thousand at the end of the lease, if you do that, then probably when you sell it, Caterpillar will bring more money, but it probably ain't gonna bring over ninety thousand dollars at an auction, would you think?
Nah, I wouldn't think it's.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. We, we gotta pull out of our pocket another ninety thousand dollars.
I don't know which one you got. Caterpillar is, a Caterpillar was sixty thousand dollars more than the Komatsu.
Well, I don't know, it, it don't have a name on, on this here. It, the only name it's got is on Komatsu.
This is all for the Komatsu.
Thing, well, what's the other price? It's lower, about two or three thousand dollars more.
The, for the, the other price for the Caterpillar?
Mr. Clark, put it in, put a pencil in that part, sleep.
Anyway, what I was getting at there, now, two things, Komatsu, I definitely wanna make sure that if it tears up, we, we can get it fixed and get it back grading. So we don't want it just to be, I have been told that we have a Caterpillar in the shop for six months, boy.
And, and there has been times whenever we had a bunch of graders down and we've reached out to Komatsu and they loaned us graders to help us stay afloat when I couldn't get one from cat.
So, I mean, I, I, you know, you know more about it. We've had some Komatsus already and you already know what kind of service they give. I don't.
Right.
I just know it's a far, I'm, I reckon it may not be far and made, but it's, it's not like Caterpillar or John Deere.
Right, they, they're, they, they in there with them because they don't, they don't sell backhoes or anything like that, but loaders and big excavators and road graders, that's, that's what they're in.
And another question I got, I can.
Go ahead.
If you get the Komatsu, I know we getting five, and we got basically five districts. Four, four, I guess you say, well, grading roads active. Uh, one of the four could take care of part of the five, um, you know, that, but anyway, is it, are they gonna be like one in each district or all going to one, two districts?
I mean, I hadn't really thought of.
Reason I, reason I was even thinking about that is if you do have trouble with it, whatever, you ain't got all of them in one district. So then you ain't got nothing.
I will, we'll move them around and make, make do with whatever we have to do. I mean, if we wanna put one in each district, that's fine. The way it's falling right now is pretty much, uh, you're senior guys that's, that's got these.
Uh, that's, that's, uh, I, I, I know if we gotta, I'd rather own them. But like I said, in you do have something to sell regardless of whatever brand you go with.
And I, and I think if we could add of these, if we could have a couple of these that'll last longer than five years and then when we buy ten, if we can have three or four of them that'll last longer than five years, it'll break. Spending five million dollars at one time.
Well, I'm.
I mean, it'll, we can, we can break that cycle so it's.
I know you can't do it here, but myself, I'm a firm believer in wearing them out.
Well.
I mean, I, if I still, I got, I got.
And that's what I'm saying, we, you know, we spend a lot of time looking at all this. Uh, myself and Tim and Rhett is kinda where it starts out, but we keep all the spreadsheets and documents of what we've spent on each piece of equipment. And once it gets to where we don't see where we're just backing up, it's, it's time to.
Cause this is. Keep going.
No, but anyway, I, I just, I just wanna get that, but I do know if we gotta pay ninety thousand dollars to, at the end of the lease to own it. And we could pay this right here and, 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 and don't have to pay the nine and we own them at the end of this.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, if we wanted to buy these five Caterpillars right now, I think it'd be like one twenty a piece. Isn't that what I told you?
But we don't have to pay nothing on the Komatsu, we own them at the end of the thing. And then, because the, what, the reason I'm saying is if you turn around and take them to an auction, you're not gonna get probably much over ninety thousand if you get that or whatever. Use it often, even though it's a good name brand, you know, a lot of contractors go with that name Caterpillar name brand. Another question, is the Caterpillar all wheel drive?
They, they make them. We got two of them right now. We're not replacing them with all wheel drives.
That's right.
I mean, I don't, I can't justify the cost versus the benefit.
Well.
I mean, because if they, it's kind, it's kinda, and I drive a four-wheel drive truck myself, but it's kinda like, if you got a two-wheel drive truck, you get it stuck, somebody can get there to pull you out. You get a four-wheel drive truck, you're in a bind. And that's what happens with them six-wheel drive graders.
Is that right?
There, put it, put yourself in that position.
Okay, I'm, I'm through.
It's all right. It's okay. Anybody got anything else? Go ahead.
Two questions. Two questions.
Mm-hmm.
Out the five graders we're trading right now, how many of them would you keep if we owned them?
I would probably keep two or three. Because like I say, the ones that's gotten Bobby Cook, Tommy Jackson, you know, they, they got hours on them, but they've been taken care of. Those guys, they're not gonna put them somewhere and they, they know what they can do.
That's just based on experience and know how.
I, I think so a lot.
The second one. Can Komatsu in February, with us doing it now, can they have five graders of both?
They have a surement they can.
And, and that would be the next agenda item, Mr. French, so that we can secure those.
All right, everybody finished? I'll entertain a motion. But I got.
I'm making a, I'm making a motion to approve of.
Thank you.
Long thing.
Got a motion to approve? So do I hear a second? Got a second on this side both time. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, move along to the next.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, uh, item number seventeen is associated with the previous agenda item. Uh, now that the board has agreed to allow us to borrow the funds, we need to send a purchase order to Komatsu so that they can have those five graders ready in February so that when we, uh, when these existing five go off lease, we are, they have five that are ready to replace them. So we're asking the commission to approve.
I'm assuming with everything in place, since we're gonna be issuing a purchase order for, uh, one million six hundred forty-nine thousand, we, we're capable of doing that financially?
Yes, sir. But say that again, Mr. Don.
Well, we, we, we've just, uh, we're getting ready to borrow those dollars. We'll be able, so those are available to us right now?
A- as soon as they receive the resol, the resolution.
Okay, but as soon as we issue a purchase order, uh, we're basically saying that we've got those dollars, so.
Uh, we can, if, if, we can hold on to the, uh, purchase order for a few days until we get the, the resolution to the association.
Question I was asking about on the, it said total amount of million six hundred forty-nine dollars. So, uh, it also, another one down here said amount a million nine hundred. What, what's the million nine, I said? Is that another bid? Uh, I got two different prices.
On the purchase order that you're looking at?
Three nine three.
Lindsay. This purchase order, one million nine hundred and eighty-four, six thirty?
Yeah, there's another price down on mine that says a mount.
Lindsay, do you see the?
Million nine hundred.
That's the Caterpillar quote underneath the one million six forty-nine. Thank you, Tom. So the one million six forty-nine, six two four and fifty cent, Mr. Crutchfield is the.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, that same dude, different prices. I didn't know if that was the, the next, next lowest price, which would be higher.
That's from Red.
Get you find that.
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Would you scared you, why would you find that?
Yeah, man.
It would have made.
Yes, it's long, can't say it.
I agree.
So we gotta look at it, well. Well. We, we. We're trying to.
Process order.
I don't think we made a motion yet, did we?
No, I, I guess.
No.
We're trying to save money and I think based on. Pay extra for the lease ones, uh, I make a motion, we approve the Komatsu.
A second.
Got a motion in a second to approve Komatsu. Get somebody to read that number real slow.
One million six hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cent.
We thank you.
Just load up?
Yes, sir. Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, move along.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, the next item is number eighteen. This is a, uh, the board approval of award to sell surplus property. In May of twenty twenty-three, the board approved the, to surplus the property. Uh, we received bids in August of twenty twenty-five. Uh, the minimum bid required was six thousand three hundred thirteen and sixty-six cents. We actually received a bid amount of six thousand five hundred and eighty and we're asking the board to approve the sale of surplus property.
Salute, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, I have a statement, Mr. Crutchfield, to sell the surplus property, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, move along. Uh, we getting after it now.
Mr. Westbrook, uh, item number nineteen is asking for board approval of, uh, construction engineer inspector services at the museum, uh, construction project. Uh, the, this was the, uh, we're asking the board to approve the C D I services, uh, with the D H M engineering firm.
Yeah.
All heard the recommendations.
Some moves, yeah.
Have a motion by Dr. Fire, second, but Mr. Crutchfield to approve, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, move along.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mr. Westbrook, next item number twenty is, um, to, a request to the board to approve the November and December meeting, uh, as well as take action on the December, uh, holiday and the January holiday. The, as you know, the Veterans Day falls on November. The, as you know, the Veterans Day falls on November the eleventh, which is our typical board meeting. We're asking the board to move that to the following date, which would be the twelfth. And also hold one meeting in December. December, hold the one meeting in December, which would be on December the seventeenth.
What about the, what about the November twenty-fifth meeting, which is?
There would be no change to that.
So we keep that the same?
Yes, sir.
To the.
And also wanted to ask the board about the December Christmas holiday falls on, uh, Thursday. And the January New Year's Day falls on Thursday as well. Asking the commission to allow a administrative holiday for those two days on Fridays following those holidays.
Y'all heard the recommendation, what the board's please.
I I make a motion to, uh, uh, have the holiday on Friday too.
Okay. They have a second, they have a second, Dr. Fire. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. That's about a good week's vacation, man. They don't get a well.
Well, I see.
We need to take action. Beach too.
Question.
I'll get you.
Cause.
You recognize.
People working four day of the week, four day of the week, already off on Friday.
Be recommended.
That moving back, taking off on. Thursday, or Christmas day on Thursday, uh, Wednesday or something.
I believe it's the twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Time anyway.
You got a different circle. Some people are automatically off on Friday.
Are we talking about the, uh, Thanksgiving or are we talking about Christmas, Mr. Crutchfield?
Well, e- either day, you know, or Christmas, I guess, what I thought.
Let let me.
But even Thanksgiving, the same day, they all want.
Go ahead.
Let let me go ahead and, uh, the the first order of business was to approve moving the November eleventh. Uh, date to the twelfth because Veterans Day is on the eleventh, our normal meeting date, and we would move that to the twelfth.
And that and that's a holiday for county staff?
Holiday December, November the eleventh.
Okay, I'll offer a motion that we move the November eleventh first meeting day in November to November twelfth at nine o'clock. I second.
Yeah, I've got a motion and a second move the Veterans Day meeting to twelve, the twelfth.
All. What? Do we?
Go ahead, Doc.
Do we need to include what we're gonna do in December on that same?
Wait, do it separate if you want to. It's getting confusing with all the dates, so I think we just do separate motions.
Right.
Excuse me?
You see, I didn't say a word.
Do it right, hang.
Oh, oh, in favor of both.
I'm moving that. Move, move, move in November today.
Okay, y'all figure out what you want to do and then I'll announce it and we'll do it, I promise.
Moving November day.
My motion was to move the November eleventh date, which is on Veterans Day.
Second.
On, uh, from Tuesday to Wednesday at nine o'clock. That was, that was my motion.
Okay.
That was what I said.
That's exactly right. All right, everybody that wants to approve that, raise your right hand. If you don't, well, we'll get something else on that.
The the other point of clarification was the December meeting, we typically only have one meeting in December. So we're asking the board to approve Wednesday, December the seventeenth as the only board meeting for December.
Okay.
So I heard that recommendation. All in, all in favor of that motion?
Yeah, I make a motion.
All right, we get an emotion, motion and second and third. All right.
So.
Everybody raise your right hand. There you are. There you go.
And then the 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 third item would be to, since Christmas falls on Thursday and New Year's Day falls on Thursday. Allowing staff to have those two Fridays as holidays.
Mike, you made that.
Yeah, but my question, I did. My question was, I thought about it. But some employees are working four day of the week, so they're actually, they they pause back on be off on Wednesday.
We 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 do accommodate that in years.
All right.
There's certain amount of little boy and everybody knows, so we have a life on, well, that's what I could.
They could take out a curse because he's supposed to work in.
All right. Y'all got it, I can walk.
Well, I guess my my question will be, so that's on, that's we're giving them Friday off after Christmas. Friday off after New Year's.
Let's see, but automatically off on Friday.
So they're they're gonna get Wednesday. Those people are gonna get Wednesday off.
Yeah.
But my question is, what about Friday after Thanksgiving?
That's all right. That is already designated in the policy as a holiday for the employees.
If your pump tears up, I'll fix it.
Make sure it takes care of itself. Well, man, Charlotte them, they don't get them.
All right, now we got our motion set. Everybody got a motion set? No, all we gotta do is approve. Okay, everybody approve, raise your right hand. Everybody do, move on. Let's go.
Okay, item number twenty-one, Mr. Westbrook. Um, the, uh, over two years ago, the Board of County Commissioners were, uh, successful at having. Uh, two vehicles donated to the Board of County Commissioners that are being used by Next Step. Uh, those vehicles are owned by the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners. We're asking the board to approve transferring ownership of those donated vehicles. To the Endeavor Forward Organization, which will be used by Next Step.
Mr. Chairman.
You got it. Put it right ahead.
Just a reminder that Endeavor has to be responsible for all of the costs of transferring these assets. When we make a donation to a nonprofit, they have to be responsible for the transfer costs.
Since we're gonna give them to them, I'd say that'd be fair enough, wouldn't you?
They'd be responsible for the transfer title and tag, I'll give.
Correct.
Insurance.
Right. Are they providing insurance coverage for those vehicles?
Say again, Mr. In charge. Yes, they will provide.
Are they providing insurance coverage for?
Yes, they will.
Be responsible for.
And we have had that discussion with them, Mr. Fire.
Okay.
All in favor of that, right?
We're gonna make, I make a motion.
All right, we'll take your.
If we transfer that and with them, they're responsible for any, uh, title, insurance, uh, tags and all that. They'd be responsible for any expense from their own.
I guess.
Go ahead, Doc, but.
I'm just having a real difficult time separating them from Jackson County Board of Commissioners. Somebody help me out with that. I have a tough time with that one.
It's a little messy.
Yeah, real messy.
Mr. Fires, um, as we have done historically, um, the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners. Uh, employs those employees that work at Next Step and they are leased to, uh, Next Step Endeavor Forward Organization, which is Next Step. And they reimburse us for all those costs associated with those employees, with the grant funds that they receive from the state legislature.
Let me ask this, while we at the media area, while we evolve.
Uh, and I'm speaking from, you know, just a little bit of history of the situation. Several years ago, when Endeavor Forward was incorporated, was created. Uh, the county agreed to assist with moving that project forward as far as providing the Next Step School. And, uh, the board approved, uh, that assistance that we have historically been providing and provide today.
Okay, I understand. You give them what you were given when you came aboard, but I just, I have a tough time with that really, really.
I understand your concern about the liability.
David.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, uh, but.
Yeah, it does. You recognize. So, uh, a little bit, the history originally when we got the Dozier, the county got the Dozier property, applied for a job growth grant. In it because we were looking and in inside of that job growth grant, one thing that helped make it successful was doing the autism transition program. And so the county gave birth to Next Step Endeavor Forward out there, and that was a critical part of that. And I, what you're doing today with the vehicles is weaning them off. The whole intent was the county gave birth to it and, uh, eventually, uh, like you're saying, Dr. Sires, the county will not have, uh, as much involvement. They'll be an entity, uh, unto themselves. So these vehicle transfer is is part of that. Cause when J Trans, uh, uh, gave them the the vehicles originally, they were not in a position to. To have insurance and the liability and so the county stepped in and graciously did that. So this is, now they're they're growing up, they'll be able to take that on. And I think with the county employees, uh, you know, real key was hiring Tammy Dasher as the executive director. And and that was a real godsend on it. She had state retirement, so the county graciously allowed, kind of like you're doing with the J C E D C. To allow her to finish out her, uh, uh, part of the employment. But I, and I'm, you know, that I can speak for anybody, but I think that the, uh, intent is eventually, uh, over the next few years. That that will transition and that you won't have them potentially as employees anymore. So it's it's a transition period of you give them birth to them, let them grow up and then be independent on their, on their own as an entity in that. So it's just a process in that. I I I think it's a proud, uh, achievement by the county to do that. But I think, like you say, is the county doesn't need to be in that business and so it needs to do transition and that's what's happening here, I believe.
So do we, would it be in the area, if I make a statement that we're giving them precedence in terms of getting those vehicles awarded them? As opposed to some other quasi-governmental agency?
Well, the, uh, J Trans surpluses vehicles, uh, to nonprofits, uh, on it and, uh.
If I could, Mr. Melon, yeah, uh, I was on the board with J Trans as well. And, uh, the whole, uh, reason that those vehicles were donated to Jackson County. Was to serve the mission of the Next Step School.
They they were essentially donated to Next Step, but the county stepped in and provided the insurance coverage on those until today. And that's, that that was a, a, a growth process. And so today, it wasn't, J Trans didn't donate those to the counties specifically. They donated them to Endeavor Forward to, uh, to, uh, do that. But the county stepped in and said, we'll take care of them and insure them in our all overall policies. But now they're grown up enough that you can transfer those vehicles. So it, I I think what Jim's kind of saying, those those were not just county vehicles, they were intended for them. And now we're taking the liability, or they are taking the liability off the county and the responsibility of them off the county.
But technically the county accepted ownership though, right?
Yes.
For those vehicles, so technically they really were.
They they were, yeah.
Technically, but they they, the only reason that they were donated to the county is because it would serve Next Step Endeavor Forward Incorporated. That's the only reason they were donated to the county.
Yeah, I think J Trans and Jim and I sat on that board, made the donation, the Next Step. The county just stepped in and said, we'll cover those with insurance until. Next Step can get their act together and step up enough to be able to take them over, and that's why they're doing today. And I think the same thing will happen with the employees, uh, that, uh.
So so technically the city of Prickeville or Long or Alford or whatever.
That's.
Bastard. If they were interested, thank you, sir. And those vehicles, they would be automatically excluded. They could not be considered.
Well, these are buses. I don't, I don't know that these municipalities would have a use other than just accepting them and then running around.
Yeah, and I'm not questioning whether they have a use, but to say, I'm speaking in general, they're, they are in the interest in it. They would, they would be ruled out.
I I can tell you from it being on J Trans board that the J Trans bumps out vehicles pretty often. And so any nonprofit or municipal that is interested in a vehicle, all they gotta do is send a request to J Trans board. And and that, uh, I think that'd certainly be considered.
Well, you are absolutely correct, Mr. Spires. Uh, it would be, uh, you know, you would be, I I guess it would be, uh, not fulfilling the request by the county. If we offered it to other people, the request by the county at the time was, we want to have these vehicles donated. Because we want to help Next Step Endeavor Forward Academy, Next Step Academy. That was the whole intent. So yes, while what you're saying is absolutely correct, uh, you would be violating the, not violating, but it would be, you know, misleading. The Jackson County J Trans, J Trans, uh, uh, board, uh, whenever it be, uh, you know. Violating what their intent was at the time, which was to help the Endeavor Forward Next Step Academy.
Yeah, and I understand that. That's that's a legitimate consideration, but I'm just saying that our constitution is going to say you as the Board of County Commissioners. Gave Agency X these vehicles. We had no option in it as well, for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I I understand. I just wanna, in my involvement in it is trying to fulfill exactly what you're saying. Is that that, uh, Endeavor Forward Next Step grows up and becomes independent on its own. But very grateful for the the birthing that the county is giving to that. I think it's something that the county can be very, uh, proud of. And 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 it was very, and it is very advantageous to have, if you attract a employee, kind of like you did with J C D E D C. Of, of being able to maintain somebody's state benefits, uh, you know, in employment that with with no cost to the county. It's it's, it's, uh, that makes it attractive because it's hard to hire somebody away from a good job, uh, with the state. Uh, without being able to continue their employment, but again, at no cost to the county.
One last question now, shut up, okay? Now we established an account criteria in regards to when this agency will mature and become. Self-sustaining and not have a lot of involvement as a county.
Yeah. Yeah, I I think that's, you know, it's stepping back to, it does, today's a, a transition of getting rid of the vehicle. So you're not responsible for that. I, I, you know, I think, uh, if they continue receiving the, uh, the funding and all like that. Uh, I I I think, uh, Ms. Asher, this executive director, she's, I think she's entered into the drop program. And so her need for being in the in the state system and you providing that, you know, is is fading away, uh, as well. Uh, on it. I I don't know a definite time on that, but this is a big step forward in, uh, in doing all that.
I said the last question, I'm sorry.
Yes, I know, no, no.
Who is seeking her to her drop time? Who selects her replacement?
They do.
Who does?
Their board. Endeavor's board, Next Step, whatever.
They have a separate board.
It would not be a.
I I would assume when when she completes her drop program, she's no longer a state employee and she wouldn't need to be an employee of the board. And that Endeavor Forward could hire her directly then. And and that that would be that process of moving her out of, uh, a position of, of, uh, being an employee of the of the county.
Which got a unique arrangement and again, I'm also of emphasis.
That's all right. Dr. Fire, go right ahead.
You know, to assume responsibility without control is an awful position to be in, and I just feel that's where we are. I really do. Maybe you're wrong.
Well, I think ultimately on any of that, you have ultimate control, uh, on it.
You think so?
We could terminate the lease of the employees and and, you know, they would be on their own.
And I'm not interested in, you know, kicking people out or anything that makes, I'm, my. Reason for being here, and I'm sure my constitution is electing me for this reason, to protect Jackson County.
Yes.
And that's what I'm here trying to do. I don't mean anybody that you will, I'm not trying to get rid of anybody or any of that thing like that. We gotta, I'm speaking for the people of Jackson County.
Yes.
Yeah, I I think it's, like you say, the county going down this road is a little unusual, uh, giving birth to this. But I think it's something in the, it's serving county residents, uh, uh, right now. But eventually I think it'll be a major economic development, uh, for the county. Got it, you know, you got a huge voluntary staff that's really working hard and diligent out there. I think it's something that we can be very proud of and I agree with you, if the county gave birth to it. But let it go on its own, uh, in the future and that transition is is happening. I'm I'm proud of them and making that that transition on it. And I think it's something that is very beneficial to, uh.
I think if you look at it holistically, it is, it is good.
It's kind of, the state is making significant, you know, three or four hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, investment in it. And so in a way, the county's making a a small investment in that, not finding. Not financially, but support wise uh in that because you get reimbursed in it. So it's kind of a partnership with it. With the the county and the state to give birth uh to this organization.
And um, everyone, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you guys for your response.
Thank you, yes, sir.
I appreciate that.
I remember what Mr. Spire said, we have to get elected, so he's protecting our essence. That's good. Nothing wrong with it. I'll entertain a motion.
You got a motion, Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
I've been, that was yesterday, I forgot.
You do that, you do have a motion from Mr. Crutchfield.
Okay. Okay, I got a second from Mr. Don, but all in favor, raise your hand.
Right, gas the first to repeat.
Sir.
Also please, can you repeat the motion?
Let's vote.
Yep.
Let's vote. All in favor, raise your hand. We got four, move on.
Of the of surplus and the two vehicles and transferring them to endeavor forwards with endeavor forward uh covering any transfer costs.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Right, right. In its stance.
Y'all want to approve after the fact?
Yes, we're.
All right, move on.
I voted next.
Yeah, all of them. Now we'll all get beat over the head together if it takes it.
Okay, Ms. Westbrook, item number twenty-two is a request for board approval of special projects. If the board will remember. Uh, during the uh the staff has been through a budget process and a budget has been prepared and adopted. Uh, the only thing that we did not take action on was the uh potential approval of special projects or capital projects for Jackson County. Uh, last month, we actually uh brought you the list of special projects slash capital purchases. Uh, originally, the different departments provided the provided us with a list of uh. Special projects that they wanted to do. Uh, we've whittled that list down to a a smaller list. And then, once we got to that smaller list, we went back to each department and said, we need you to identify the top. Two or four items that you would like uh that you that you need in order to be successful within your department. And they came back with a list which uh is in your board book. And the the total for all of those projects is approximately right at two million dollars, which we have identified as. Monies that we did not use in the previous year. If you're looking at that list, the top portion of that. Is the T D C projects and Russ House projects which are funded with uh. The T D C projects are funded with non abor type dollars. Those dollars come from the five cent.
Those dollars are not included in the one million nine hundred ninety-six thousand.
That's correct, Mr. Don, right.
And the one million nine hundred ninety-six thousand dollars basically is those islands highlighted in green.
Yes, that's correct. And so we're asking for a board to take action on the proposed list of capital purchases.
Now, I only have one question. This kind of escaped me and it's not.
Didn't ask it. Throw it out of hand.
It's not uh the temporary animal shelter for natural disasters. It's only a nine thousand. Nine thousand nine nine thousand nineteen dollar. What what actually is that?
Uh, as it was explained to me, Mr. Don, bro, uh, whenever you have a disaster. Uh, and people bring their animals, uh, we need to have a place to store them, uh, place those animals. If you remember after Hurricane Michael, we had a lot of animals at high school and we had no no way to house them or cage them. So. This would help us accommodate.
So where where would that facility be constructed at?
Um, that has not been determined at this point.
Is that for a facility or is that just temporary pens?
It's temporary pens. As far as being mobile, Mr. Branch, or.
Yeah, I would think maybe at the exit.
That that's, I mean, we have not determined that at this point. Okay.
Our recommendation is the recommendation. What's the board to play?
Make a motion to approve it.
I'll say it.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Move on.
Uh, Mr. Westbrook, in the uh. Section five, we have a request from the Jackson County Education Foundation. Uh, they held their annual pork chop sale fundraiser at the Ag Center. They're asking. The board of county commissioners to waive those fees for that facility for dysfunction. And also soliciting purchases for pork chops from the board of county commissioners.
That'd be fine. About gonna put it around our neck or we gonna get served on plate?
Always, always. I'll offer a motion to approve the fee waiver.
Okay, that'd be whatever. Second, motion and a second, all.
Okay, yeah.
They would raise their right hand, all opposed, same sign.
Mr. Westbrook, uh, we did have a Ms. Jones that has asked to speak to the board of county commissioners.
Come forward to Ms. Jones if you hear. We save the best for last.
Oh, my name is Purdy, Johnny, you know. You know, I'm Kim. Let's see if I can get the mo- the motion appeal that they denied. We're digging a ditch in in our Cherry Street in Jacob. Waterfall, eighty-seven Cherry, heat in Jacob where the ditch was was dug back in seventeen. Because I had so much water down there. It was like my house was sitting in a little river. And the water come all the way up to the to the porch. Now they had it cleaned out. They had a time getting it, but they had it cleaned out. And then, and to my understanding, they were supposed to. Maintain that ditch, but it has not been maintained. So I got pictures of the water from my house sitting in the water. You know, and I'm see if I can get that uh deny or repeal.
I'll ask you a question. Who do you know who approved the maintenance?
If 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 I ain't comment.
Yes, sir.
I relieved the board for two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah, I asked the board to consider the public work project. Yes, it was approved by the board at that time. Okay, so that's when the work was actually done. And then that alleviated the problem, but I think you now you're saying some vegetation has grown up, balking the floor with water again.
Yeah.
Okay, so when I bought it before it was denied, so she's coming to the board asking to reconsider the.
Okay, when was it denied?
Oh, must have been about a month, it's all gone, a couple months ago.
What address is it?
Uh, address, this is.
Sure.
What's the address of that property?
Address is uh forty-four eighty-seven Cherry Court. And the county has property coming across in front where this ditch is. And then it has property sitting behind that piece of property and, you know.
And Cherry Court is maintained by the county?
Yeah.
Cherry Court is, yeah.
Just a line too.
I thought this was a, I thought this was approved a while back to do it and we had to send out some. Uh, copies for everybody to sign. To so we could access their property. We can access the county property on either side and. And we could access yours, but there's still other properties that we have not gotten any anything back on that we have sent out. We mailed it out to the property owners, but then they signed so we could be on that property. We have not received.
That guy's thick.
Have you got addresses there?
Yes, sir. Or I don't have them with Kerry's got them.
If it's okay with the board, I will be willing to say it's possible to see if I can solicit approval from the other property owners.
Okay, I can. I mean, I I can get Kerry to send it out to you because she.
Okay.
She's got it.
Okay, and I will I will go out and see if I can get.
Okay, all right.
So you're just waiting for permission to 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 be able to clean that dish up.
I thought this was approved a few months ago, so we had all the stuff drawn up.
I think we did those on that.
And I mean, I thought we did too, and I heard her say that and I wasn't, I wasn't sure, but it was denied. Okay.
Off in one six.
A little bit, but but a question I had, my 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 feeling on that is. It's a lot of places, just like your similar things, or we can't get on private property unless it's having a problem with the road. If it's if it's messing up the road, then you can get on there and fix. Fix it to help the road, clean out something, get the water off the road, but uh. Is the water backing up on the road? It'll back up on the road when you back it up in your property.
Through the yard, daddy.
Yes.
It didn't back up.
Yes, ma'am. Do you live on the road? You live on the road?
I live a little off the road.
Okay.
It's it's off the road.
See.
And all around there, sitting like I'm sitting in a little river.
Yeah.
And my grandson was living there and they had to wave their out with their two kids. And it's so bad, he needed a boat to get out of door to get to high.
See, we have, we have, we have a lot of people have come in before with the same problem. And we deny because we had to get on private property to do that because it had nothing to do with with the problem with the road. You know, now if they do have a problem with the road, you know. Probably could get something done about it, but I guess it goes back to another thing too, that you actually. Spending taxpayer dollars to do something on private property. Isn't that right, Ms. Jordan?
So what's that?
If if I recall correctly, I may interrupt here. When I bought this shit from the board. Commissioner Crutchfield mentioned the fact that he had some next that he requested help and you could not get him.
Yeah, I always been told no.
And at that point in time, the board did not request, so.
That was.
That's why I told Ms. Jones she needs to come, because I had presented it and the board denied it.
It was on limited court. He presented one on Cherry Court, but it didn't back.
Limited court was one as well, but Cherry Court is the most recent one I presented.
That's right, yeah.
And I specifically remember you using the example of not getting a ditch for you now.
That's right.
And go to forty-one to deny the request. And I told you that I had done all I could do.
Right.
And that you had to come and ask me.
Right.
Okay, that's where we stand. So it never was officially approved as registered. Okay, no.
So I'm asking y'all if y'all please, you know, appeal that decision.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I I know, uh.
Chair, entertain a moment. Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I I I understand your problem, whatever. There's a lot of people got the same problem and and I know in my district. I have to tell them no, you know, and and I hate to tell you no, but, you know. Tell you, say, we can do yours, but don't do theirs. That's where problems at. Even just.
Depending on three, we, whatever the decision is, we need to be consistent. We need to be consistent across the board. If we're not doing this. For this particular situation, any similar situation uh that we run into, that the answer needs to be no or yes, depending.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, what whatever precedent is.
I agree.
I've not been on this board long enough to to run into this enough times.
Did you tell me the water is coming off the road into your yard?
Yes, sir.
Uh, can Mr.
It's coming through the ditch, coming.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
It's a drain from the city of Jacob.
Yes, ma'am.
It's coming through the ditch, through the kind of kind of property, and it's waving out, waving out into, you know, that's the situation.
I may ask, I'm going to ask Mr. Register. Uh, is is the water not flowing properly that's causing her place to be flooded? Because it's like, it's like she said, you know, also like. They're in the middle of a lake.
Yes, they do.
So I had not actually walked back there. I didn't think anybody lived in the house because it didn't appear when I went up there. The road had been mowed, cut in, but it's it's in a low area anyway. And you've got a drain comes from the west to the east, coming through a field that they've just recently cleared in the last couple of years, so that don't help. With the water and then it comes through right there and it goes through, I think about five properties. And it's making its way to the railroad tracks and it goes and goes on the railroad tracks and goes north uh across one sixty-two.
Railroad track, it's holding up the water problem.
Well, it's got to work its way.
That's right.
So I guess, is there anything that we can do on our property or our maintenance responsibility that will give her some relief?
I think there's a power line easement that comes off one sixty-two that goes in there. Does that power line easement go into your place? So we could probably go into access in front of hers and ours. But you still, you still would be getting one. Right up next to uh Cherry Court and then a couple closer to the railroad tracks.
Still, still be getting on private property.
Is there?
And the road is not flooding the property.
Right.
Do you agree? The road?
Yeah, the road, the road is coming onto the road.
Yeah.
But it's getting in there where it's called.
Now, if I recall correctly, many years ago, there was a portion of Cherry Court. That had not been maintained because there were nobody actually residing in that area. There are several of those situations. Is that possibly contributing to the quality?
And there where that's out, yes, sir. There's nobody in there like maintaining anything.
Right.
Anything like that. Most of like you got a couple hours when you first turn on Cherry Court. Right there, then you got this drain that John was establishing now. Then, once you get on down toward the end, there's a. A house with three or four mobile homes.
And the past situation in the past where we've stopped maintaining because they weren't living there and then family decided to move back home and the roads.
And since, yes, and since I've been here, I've never known to do anything.
Right.
So that's ever been documented before. That's something that I've never been provided.
I see, true. In some cases, you can actually see the road bed.
Right.
Yeah.
Did did you get a copy of that? Ms. Jordan provided me with a copy of the state statute. Florida statute?
Right.
You read that?
Yeah.
Each one of y'all read that?
I did not.
What 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 you could do? Do you remember that?
Shows what you can do with it, yeah.
It states, it states in it, I don't have a copy women, but I I I got it. And it states in there. That you cannot get on private property and do work. It does say if it if if. The road caught in a problem and the road flooding and washing out, you can get in there and clean that ditch out and do that. But but you can't get on private property to help the private person with taxpayer's dollars. It states what it states. Similar to that, it goes on, it goes on farther, but that that's worth that. I mean. It's, I think if you look back on the thing, though, it would have proved, I would argue against it, compared to four one comes in there. Some particular one would have proved.
Right, yes. Wow, this is.
I just thought.
I do, but you got.
I don't care. I don't care.
I said it was proved.
If it wasn't, I made a mistake because I I went down, I was and had it wrote up.
Okay.
And mailed out for the people to sign like we were.
Mr. Chair, can can we uh go back and review the, we'll go back and review the minutes of the the meeting where I think it was approved too. And then we can uh better answer Ms. Jones's question. Ms. Jones, can I, I've got your phone number. I can reach out to you. Uh, and just, Mr. Rachel, I'll make it make it a point to call you.
I appreciate that.
I'll send the X later.
Okay.
Is that okay, Mr. Westbrook?
Yes, sir.
Um, Marie is looking it up right now.
Probably would take thirty minutes. It probably won't take thirty minutes.
It's a little over there.
Sixty.
I can take a damn X.
Been doing it all day.
I fix them. I fix them for free.
I live on the surface. It's going to be fair. And I know we have today, we had the same, someone come in, we'll use the M four, we tell them no.
You got it. Is consensus for this board to give Mr. Dane a chance to review all that? And figure out what we can.
Okay, yeah, I. In July, okay. Have you gotten there yet? Okay.
Well, while we're waiting, can I bring up something?
Sure you can.
Before I forget about it.
Sure you can, yeah.
T D C meetings yesterday, Kelsey, um, and I noticed several of the plants. Uh, recent plantings are don't appear to be doing very well. I'm assuming you're kind of on that. Talking to the contractor, working to get those replaced.
I'm getting them out. They're going to happen at the most opportune time to make sure the plant very good to survive on their base, but they they have gone out. They can work out.
Thank you. Now, if you care better, I can set the clock. There's about ten of those, I mean, they plants have died. Same, I'm sure they're out there, I just want to make sure somebody's. That's what we mentioned. Definitely quit themselves. It would tend to be tough to see.
Oh, wow, okay.
Well, we got a special system. Okay, they're trying to make it better, they're ordering these.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
You want to be in one. Yeah, great. Yeah, part of the consent agenda.
Maybe.
Consent agenda was approved.
You're applying to number C. And B, C, D, I'm sorry.
And consent agenda.
You want mail for the wrong pick.
Okay, so so in that case, if the consent agenda was approved, Mr. Register was correct, he should have received that. Stay corrected.
I mean, I just remember it being approved, I didn't, on consent, I just.
You're part of the consent agenda, so it was just part of a fact approval.
So uh, Mr. Westbrook, if if I understand where we're at, uh, Mr. Register is trying to get ingress egress agreements from adjacent landowners. Mr. Spires has agreed to help with that process, so uh Mr. Register will get with Mr. Spires on getting that since it has been approved.
That's the board's pleasure. That's the board's pleasure.
Already approved, yeah.
Already approved, I was wrong, I was trying to get approved, I was going to get it a second time again, anyway.
So I guess we could let Ms. Jones know that I've agreed to assist in getting your neighbors to sign these minutes so that the work can be done. Okay?
Thank you.
I said, to to let you know what is going on here, I agreed that I would personally help in getting signatures from your neighbors to allow the work to be done, okay? That's where we are.
Anybody else got anything to say?
That's the only person that was on the uh side to speak, Mr. Westbrook.
Anybody on this board want to say something?